For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. The meeting is being streamed live on PPTV, PPTV Services website and on Channel 28. It'll be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. As of August 13th, Governor Kate Brown reinstated a statewide indoor mask requirement for all indoor public settings, whether vaccinated or not, in order to stop the highly contagious COVID Delta variant from spreading further. Tonight, we have in place mitigation strategies to help keep everyone safe, members of the public and staff. Board members and staff in attendance are wearing masks and most, if not all, are vaccinated. We have air purifiers spread throughout the boardroom. And we have ample space for you to spread out and there's plenty of room. I appreciate everybody spacing themselves. So, good evening, everyone. I want to welcome the Board, the Superintendent, staff, family, students and special guests. Tonight, we begin with a resolution that celebrates Latinx heritage in Portland Public Schools. For me, as an Afro-Latina, I know that when students are seen for who they are, they feel valued and empowered. Other students benefit by gaining a fresh perspective of different cultures and positive contributions. And this helps to gain a better understanding and appreciate the diverse world around them. To begin, Marifel Sager, Manager of Language Access Services, will read the resolution in Spanish.
(speaking Spanish)
I don't know if, is your microphone on?
Yes, can you hear me? Okay. Buenas noches, miembros de la Junta Educazional y Público en General. Resolución número 106,173. Resolución que proclama la celebración del mes de la herencia hispana nacional en las escuelas públicas de Portland. Considerando que la semana de la herencia hispana, la cual comenzó en 1968 bajo el presidente Lyndon Johnson, fue expandida a mes de la herencia hispana por el presidente Ronald Reagan y promulgada como ley en 1988 para cubrir un periodo de 30 días a partir del 15 de septiembre, el día que representa el aniversario de la independencia de cinco países latinoamericanos. Este año marca el 200º aniversario de la independencia de Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras y Nicaragua de España, todas ocurridas en septiembre de 1821. También reconocemos la independencia de Belize, del Reino Unido, la independencia de Chile y México en 1810 de España, y la independencia de Brasil, de Portugal, en 1822. Que los hispanos y latinos siempre han enriquecido y formado positivamente nuestra comunidad, desde aquellos cuyas raíces se remontan a generaciones anteriores hasta aquellos que han llegado recientemente a buscar la promesa de los Estados Unidos. Ellos representan el espíritu de nuestro sueño americano, que con el trabajo, arduo y educación, se puede construir una vida mejor para uno mismo y un futuro mejor para nuestros hijos. Que los hispanos y latinos hacen importantes contribuciones a nuestro país y comunidad y continúan logrando avances en la educación, la ciencia, el arte, la cultura y el servicio público, y han sido una influencia constante y vital en el crecimiento y la prosperidad de nuestra comunidad. Que más del 16% de alumnos matriculados en las escuelas públicas de Portland son hispanos y/o latinos. Que más del 10% de nuestros empleados se compone de hispanos y/o latinos y contribuyen a lograr la misión de PPS en cada nivel dentro de cada departamento y división del distrito. Que nuestras escuelas honran y preservan los bienes lingüísticos y culturales de los estudiantes a través de los clubes estudiantiles como MECHA y programas de enriquecimiento como nuestros cursos de inmersión lingüística bilingüe, estudios étnicos, teoría crítica de las razas y la opción de obtener un sello de alfabetización bilingüe al graduarse. Que honran y enriquecen las distintas procedencias de nuestros alumnos, que hablan español como un idioma de herencia, a la vez que exponen a los que no hablan español, a las diversas perspectivas multilingües y multiculturalles. Que nuestro distrito y nuestra comunidad se fortalece con el apoyo y la abogacía de organizaciones como Latino Network, Hacienda CDC, la Cámara Hispana Metropolitana, Verde, el Teatro Milagro y el Programa Hispano. Que reconocemos que cuando elevamos a los estudiantes, al personal, a las familias y a los miembros de la comunidad, hispanos y latinos, fortalecemos a todo nuestro distrito. Cuando creamos, creamos más caminos hacia la oportunidad educativa, proporcionamos la oportunidad para todos los estudiantes de alcanzar su mayor potencial. Que entender, reconocer y promover las aportaciones de nuestros estudiantes, personal y familias y las comunidades hispanas y latinas es una parte importante de la celebración del mes de la herencia hispana. Que el valor fundamental de la equidad racial y justicia social de las escuelas públicas de Portland es creer en el derecho fundamental a la dignidad humana y que generar un mundo equitativo requiere un sistema educativo que interrumpa intencionalmente y que construya líderes para interrumpir los sistemas de opresión. En ningún momento de la historia de nuestra comunidad ha sido más crítica la necesidad de trabajar juntos y es importante que los residentes de Portland se unan con un espíritu de bienvenida e inclusión para acoger los talentos y contribuciones de los residentes, incluidos los miembros hispanos y latinos en nuestra comunidad. Que las escuelas públicas de Portland tienen una política de equidad racial que establece nuestro compromiso de superar afirmativamente las barreras educativas que han resultado en la brecha persistente e inaceptable para los estudiantes de color y de dar a cada estudiante la oportunidad y el apoyo para alcanzar su máximo potencial. Que cerrar las brechas de oportunidades mientras elevamos el rendimiento de todos los estudiantes es la prioridad principal de la Junta Escolar, el Superintendente y todo el personal del distrito. Y que la Junta Escolar de las Escuelas Públicas de Portland cree que cada estudiante debe ser celebrado y apreciado por las distintas y vibrantes contribuciones que hacen al compartir culturas, idiomas, ideas, creencias y valores dentro de la comunidad escolar. Se resuelve que la Junta Escolar de las Escuelas Públicas de Portland, por la presente, promueve el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como el mes de la herencia hispana y alienta a los miembros del personal, alumnos y a la comunidad a observar, reconocer y celebrar la cultura, herencia y contribuciones de los hispanos y latinos a Portland, Oregon y a los Estados Unidos a través de la actividad, de actividades culturales relevantes y aprender del pasado y entender que estas son las experiencias que han formado a los Estados Unidos. Gracias.
Gracias. Thank you, Senora Sager. Thank you so much. Let's clap for that, that's awesome. I'm gonna go ahead and read it in English. Hispanic Heritage Week, which began in 1968 under President Johnson, was expanded to National Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan and enacted into law in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th, the day that represents the anniversary of independence for five Latin American countries. This year marks the 200th anniversary of the independence of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, from Spain in September of 1821. We acknowledge the independence of Belize from the UK, Chile and Mexico's independence from Spain in 1810, and Brazil's independence from Portugal in 1822. Hispanics and Latinos have always enriched and positively impacted our community, from those whose roots trace back generations to those who have recently arrived to pursue the promise of the United States. They represent the spirit of our American dream, that with hard work and an education, you can build a better life for yourself and a better future for your children. Hispanics and Latinos make profound contributions to our community and to our nation and continue to make advances in education, science, art, culture and public service and have been a consistent and vital influence in our community's growth and prosperity. More than 16% of enrolled students in Portland Public Schools are Hispanic and/or Latino. Hispanics and Latinos comprise almost 10% of our employees and contribute to the accomplishment of PPS's mission at every level within every department and division within the district. Our schools honor and preserve the linguistic and cultural aspects, assets of Latinx students through student clubs such as MECHA and enrichment programs such as our dual-language immersion and ethnic studies courses, with the option to obtain a seal of biliteracy upon graduation that honors and enriches the diverse backgrounds of our heritage Spanish speakers while exposing non-Spanish speakers to diverse multilingual and multicultural perspectives. Our district and our community is strengthened by the support and advocacy of organizations like Latino Network, Hacienda CDC, the Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber, Verde, Milagro Theater and El Programa Hispano. We recognize that when we lift up Hispanic/Latino students, staff, families and community members, we strengthen the fabric of our entire district. When we create more pathways to educational opportunity, we provide the chance for all students to reach their greatest potential. Understanding, recognizing and promoting the assets of our Hispanic and Latino students, staff, families and community is an important part of celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Portland Public Schools' core value of racial equity and social justice is that we believe in the fundamental right to human dignity and that generating an equitable world requires an educational system that intentionally disrupts and builds leaders to disrupt systems of oppression. At no time in our community's history has the need to work together been more necessary and important that residents of Portland join in a spirit of welcoming and inclusiveness to embrace the talents and contributions of all residents, including Hispanic and Latinx members of our community. Portland Public Schools has a racial education equity policy that states our commitment to affirmatively overcome the educational barriers that have resulted in a persistent, unacceptable gap for students of color and to give each student the opportunity to support and meet his or her highest potential. Closing the opportunity gaps while raising achievement for all students is the top priority of the Board of Education, the Superintendent and all district staff. And the Portland Public Schools Board of Education believes each and every student is to be celebrated and appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing culture, language, ideas, beliefs and values within our school communities. Be it resolved that the Portland Public Schools Board of Education hereby promotes September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month and encourages staff, students and community to observe, recognize and celebrate the culture, heritage and contributions of Hispanic and Latinos to Portland, Oregon and to the United States through culturally relevant activity and to learn from the past and understand the experiences that have shaped the United States. Do I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 6364, Resolution in Celebration of Latinx Heritage in Portland Public Schools?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Director Brim Edwards moves and Director Holland seconds. Sorry, I'm hot today. Is there any board discussion on the resolution? Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
So, the Board will now vote on Resolution 6364, Resolution in Celebration of Latinx Heritage in Portland Public Schools. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6364 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative unofficially voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, the Board will vote on Consent Agenda. Board members, are there any items that you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes. The Cummins contract?
Um...
My computer is messing up.
Is that the expenditure?
The Cumming, the Cumming Management contract? Okay.
90437-RS.
There it is. Thank you. So, Ms. Bradshaw, let's see. So, we're gonna pull this item for discussion later. We'll set that one aside for discussion and we'll vote on it at the end of the meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Yes. Resolution 6365 was revised to remove the special meeting minutes from 8:10 because they were not posted prior to the meeting.
And do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda? Excuse me, I'm having a hard time following. Do we, Liz, can you tell me how we vote on this? Do we vote on every item except for that single contract?
Right, so the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Which extracts one contract identified.
Madam Chair, so I'll move the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And, let's see. So, we'll adopt, Director Brim Edwards moves, Director Lowry seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda?
I just wanna call out one thing, which is the grant that the district received from the Wallace Foundation. This is not work that we've had a chance to talk about publicly, but I just wanna commend our staff for seeking out this partnership with the Wallace Foundation, which is, helps us with one of our most critical goals, which is preparing a pipeline of diverse, strong principles. So, we look forward to hearing more about this work. And again, great job to our development team, Camille Idetabo and Jonathan Garcia and that whole team for finding this partnership. It's a very prestigious grant.
Thank you for pointing that out. I'm excited to get an update once we're ready to share that more publicly. I just want a brief note again for the list of expenditure contracts. About, I guess a month ago, I'd asked, requested that there be a column, that there's a column so we know if our, if our contract dollars are being spent in minority women and emerging small businesses. And I didn't, I don't know, I didn't print mine out, but I didn't, I didn't see it. So, it was just a heads up, if we could get that, we had it last meeting and if we could get that back. So, the Board will now vote on Resolutions 6365, I'm sorry, 6365 through 6368, the amended consent agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. And all opposed, please indicate by saying no. The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to one with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting.
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, can I just ask, this is a question about the contracts, the certified business for minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses. Is it because there's, there's none and there's no asterisk? And maybe I'm reading this wrong. Because there is, at the end of the section, there is, it looks like an asterisk that that would note it. And it may just be that there's no, there's none, which would be noteworthy.
I'm looking for Deputy Hertz, is she here?
So, but I do see, I do see at least one, it would be a community partner. It's a nonprofit. But, but I'd ask for a column, so whether there's a check in the column or not, it would be an easy visual for us to tell if there's a woman-owned business or minority-owned business that were in the consent agenda.
We heard that request from the chair and I believe it was there last time, so we'll make sure to refresh the minutes reflect accordingly.
Does that satisfy your questions?
Yeah, it just looked like maybe there's an asterisk is how you were gonna do it this time. And I wasn't sure if there just was no businesses, which is why there was no asterisks.
It looks that way, but I wanna speak accurately.
Okay. A column would clear it all up.
Yes, it would. Thank you. And I just also thank you, Director Lowry pointed out that we, I said the vote was seven to one, and there's not that many of us up here, so it would be seven to zero if we can make that amendment. So, Student and Public Comment. We now turn to Student and Public Comment. Before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for Public Comment first. And importantly, the Board thanks you for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments. Public input informs and improves our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen. And to that end, I would ask each of my colleagues to tuck your phone away during testimony so we can give our full attention to the people in front of us. Our Board Office may follow up on board-related issues related during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the Superintendent's office as a personnel matter and not aired this evening. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the Board or Superintendent, we ask that you mail them to publiccomment@ppst.net, publiccomment@ppst.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. And you'll have three minutes to speak and you'll hear a sound after three minutes, at which time I would ask you to wrap it up quickly. It's time to conclude your comments. I also wanna point out, I'm really happy to see a full room again. And I wanna just point out what we have in common is that we're, all of us in this room are here because we wanted to make changes to the system. So, thank you for being here.
We have...
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have my, I'm having a hard time transitioning tonight between the list. Do we have anyone signed up for Public Comment?
Yes, we do. We have Xander Levine.
Hello, can you hear me? Is this on?
Hello. Xander Levine, L-E-V-I-N-E. Hello, Board members. I hope you're doing well. I certainly am now that I'm back in school. I wanna start by acknowledging the success of returning back to school. We did it. I've been in school full-time, five days a week, five days a week after this week, of course. It's felt normal, but definitely a weird sensation waking up every morning, getting on the bus and going to school for a full day. So far, I do feel safe at school. That's with masks and distancing when possible, however that can be hard. With that being said, I know we can do better. Vaccines are proven to work in the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine after getting approved by the FDA. We have little to say on why someone who is eligible should not take it. The Los Angeles Unified School District was the first to mandate the COVID-19 vaccine for all students, so tonight I say let's be the second. We know that this vaccine is safe, effective and stops 99% of fatal COVID cases within our community. It's foolish not to require the COVID-19 vaccine for all students. You've already done this with all district employees and have required PPS students to receive 39 other doses of vaccines just to come into school. For those who refuse the COVID-19 vaccine, open up more space in the Virtual Learning Academy so they can continue their education from a distance. I urge you to follow LA County's lead and mandate the COVID-19 vaccine for all PPS students who are eligible. Please continue to keep us in school, full-time, five days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Danny Cage.
Can you hear me?
We can.
It's Danny Cage, D-A-N-N-Y-C-A-G-E. Good afternoon. I am Danny Cage. I am Chair of the NAACP Youth Committee and I will be speaking as a representative for the NAACP Portland Chapter. I am also the Grant High School Student District Council Representative. We are brought here today due to concerns around COVID safety. PPS has made a three-feet policy for social distancing in schools. I'm here to tell you that our hallways and classrooms are packed in like sardines. PPS is currently not following its COVID guidelines. We can't even maintain the bare minimum of three feet. How are we supposed to guarantee the safety, much less the safety of at-risk, systemically marginalized communities? Our Black and Brown communities? PPS has failed to provide updates on COVID dashboards. Only three schools are listed. My mom is a student and, my mom is a teacher and there are cases at her school are not listed on that dashboard. There are cases at the feeders that are not listed. Why are they not listed and updated when families, for families to be notified in real time? We have so many staff out that I am required to take, that I'm taking a language class required to graduate from a sub who does not speak the language. Haven't you failed enough Black men in PPS? Yesterday, four schools, including one that serves mostly immigrant communities, told families they did not have buses to bring their students back home. You open school buildings without proper support. You're not meeting the needs of our students and most importantly, our non-white students. This is not okay. We ask you to be outside-of-the-box thinkers and finally come to the community and meet its needs because our lives do depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, I think we can.
Good afternoon, Board and everyone here today. My name is Amy Hendrickson and I'm a junior at Lincoln High School and a member of the Portland Youth Climate Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As we've recently talked about in my English class, there are some things written, that written language cannot describe. Our example was in poetry, but I often struggle with the same issue when speaking about climate change. Urgent doesn't feel like it gets the point across. Critical, immediate and vital still feel minuscule when I think about the utter severity of climate change. Even though adjectives can't express these feelings, I still hope to illustrate them. Precisely 10 hours ago, I was in my fifth period, my IB geography class. Our forced assignment was to write a story of a place that was meaningful to us. Today was the last day where we were sharing these stories out loud in class. Though the prompt didn't mention climate, many students did so anyway. I heard stories of teenagers worrying about their home being swallowed up by rising sea levels and engulfed in flames and melting glaciers ruining a skier's sacred place. Many peers wrote about a tradition of visiting said place and the vivid memories coming to this place year after year. And yet, so many of them had to say that they were worried each time they returned would be the last, or that they're sad their kids will never be able to experience these blissful feelings. Most significantly to me, that these sacred traditions would be broken and made impossible by some unstoppable force, climate change. I left geography, went to sixth period, then lunch, and then I went to IB biology. Today, we were left with a sub to play a board game titled "The Pollution Game." This game, played in table groups, was similar to Monopoly with money and properties around the board that you travel to. When we landed on the oil company, we played several hundred dollars, again, just like Monopoly. But our air quality index and water quality index changed, which impacted the price of everything else on the board, like the small businesses and the local beach. Each action had some impact on our pollution meters. And as our air quality creeped up toward lethal, we enacted policies to decrease it, which caused us to spend even more. I thought it was funny watching kids around the room joking that they would never want to own a business that caused this much pollution and yet, this game was representative of our world. Reflecting back, these experiences were extremely meaningful in relation to climate change. Then again, this was just a day in the life of the 16-year-old in Portland. Climate change is so integrated into my daily thinking that it often feels insignificant to talk about for hours each day. I know that climate change is at the forefront of your students' minds and I can't convince you to all have the same incommunicable urgency in your mind, but I can ask you to take this seriously. The PPS Climate Response Policy is one example of action that you can take to prove that you are listening to your students, your constituents, who depend on you. I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. My name is Lucy, L-U-C-Y-Michaud, M-I-C-H-A-U-D. I'm here to speak to you today about the COVID concerns that I've had in my first few weeks back at school. Every day I go to school, I'm worried that while I'm walking through the packed hallways or sitting next to my peers in class, that I'm going to catch a disease and then spread it to my mother, who is asthma and could end up in the hospital, even though she is vaccinated. You claim to have a three-feet distancing policy when possible. When possible gives you all the leeway in the world. Every time, every time I walk into a class, I am never three feet away from someone. And you claim that it's nose-to-nose. Not even measuring that way, am I three feet away from people. I cannot convey to you the amount of dread I have about going to school and hurting someone I love. I just can't. And every day that this continues, we are one step closer to like mass tragedy that you have the opportunity to stop. And every day that this continues, we are one step closer to, like, mass tragedy that you have the opportunity to stop. You had a year and a half to plan for this day. You had a year and a half. Yet, when I go back to school, there are no modular classrooms that are easily available, given the fact that you spent thousands of dollars on Chromebooks for every single student. Why not spend that on policy that could help students instead? I don't need a Chromebook. I need my mother to be safe. I need my family to be safe. I need my friends to be safe. Masks are not 100% effective. This cloth mask that I'm wearing is not 100% effective. Just because people are wearing masks, and not everyone, mind you, is wearing a mask. I, you cannot claim that you are social, that you're having contact tracing in this either, which was another one of the things that you're, that you tell us is going to be in place. Because of these things that I've listed, packed hallways, packed classrooms, I just, I, I don't know how I'm having to choose between the life of people I love and getting a decent education. I'm sorry. I'm getting a little worked up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy Higgs.
Good evening. I'm, can you hear me? I'm Amy Higgs, H-I-G-G-S. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm Executive Director of the Eco School Network and one of the drafters of the Climate Crisis Response Policy. I'm grateful to all of you and especially those of you who have worked on this policy. If the policy is new to you, the intent is to mobilize district resources for immediate climate action. The policy commits PPS to net-zero emissions by 2050, prepares schools for climate impacts, and it empowers students and BIPOC community members as leaders in our transition to a resilient city. The policy is wide-reaching, involving many departments in PPS. The handout that we've shared summarizes what has happened in the two years since we brought this policy to the district. On the left, you'll see that during the first year, we worked with 20-plus community organizations listed on the back. In the second year, it went through the Policy Committee and Legal Review. District staff have been heavily involved from the start, and each of the 23 drafts has improved, and that process has built momentum. So far, there has been no opposition to this policy in the district that I'm aware of. But during those two years, let's look at how our climate has changed. The United Nations declared code red for humanity as we approached the tipping point. Over 200 medical journals agree that global warming is the world's greatest threat now to public health. We lost 100 lives to heat in the Northwest this summer, and billions of sea and land animals were lost on a single day in June. Frontline communities face the worst impacts, while others can escape to safety. And in those two years, public concern has grown, and other school districts are passing climate action plans, like Seattle's commitment to net zero by 2040. I love the Chinese proverb that the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago and the next best time is now. It's time for PPS to take the next step and start gathering community input on this policy. Our team's initial community outreach was unfortunately at the beginning of COVID during the BLM demonstrations, when most groups serving BIPOC communities did not have the time to respond. Then, when the policy was in committee, we were, we were asked to hold off on gathering more public input. As a consequence, important voices were not at the table. It's time to get it back out there this month and pass it this calendar year, with students and frontline communities seated front and center in shaping it. What has become normal to our students has included the most extreme weather events in Oregon's recorded history, so it will feel really good for them to see their school district move quickly and take bold action to safeguard their future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Amy, I don't know if you've noticed, if you've had a chance to tour our new middle school in southeast Portland. It's the first building in our portfolio that's net zero. It's really exciting. And that's, that's setting a high bar.
David Sultan.
Good evening. My name is David Scholten, spelled S-C-H-O-L-T-E-N. And I'm the parent of a first grader, and I'm also a fifth-grade teacher. On April 1st, 2021, we returned to school buildings under strict six-foot distancing guidelines. The seven-day average COVID case count that day was 378, and I had 10 students in my room. On September 1st, 2021, with a Delta variant twice as transmissible, I returned to the same classroom with the seven-day case average at 2,275, six times that of April 1st, with 24 students in the same small room. The distancing guidelines, three feet to the extent possible. It doesn't take a carefully chosen epidemiologist or a career governmental health expert to see that this is a dangerous situation. Despite coming into close contact with confirmed cases, educators at Whitman and Lincoln were denied COVID tests because they showed no symptoms. Yesterday at 2:06 PM, families at Chapman, Lincoln, Scott, and Selwood were notified that there was no bus to transport students, and they were left stranded at school to figure out a way home. None of the PPS confirmed COVID cases have shown up in the Oregon Health Authority's weekly report. Does this sound like a district that is creating a safe environment? Educators know we are teaching in unsafe conditions and express those concerns to board members directly. Families expressed anxiety about the return to full in-person instruction, wanting real and manageable alternatives for their children. In return, we get assurance after assurance that it is safe to come back. Instead of being responsive to the changes brought on by Delta and seeking input from those most impacted, PPS began a PR campaign to help people try to feel safe. We will lose members of our community to COVID as a direct result of our inadequate safety protocols. Young, unvaccinated students will die or suffer long-haul COVID symptoms we don't even fully understand yet. As we act tonight, please reflect on how you might take meaningful action to ensure a truly safe, in-person experience for students and their communities. Please consider the loss of life and health by those exposed to COVID-19 as a result of policy rooted in, not in flexible compassion for the most vulnerable, but in a hardened paternalistic view that the only way forward has been set by those above. Our stillness may also be a reminder of the stillness and silence that will be experienced by those families who lose a child to COVID as a result of our unwillingness to act with courage and have to suffer the eternal silence that will replace the laughter and joy that child once brought. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your concern, your advocacy, your concern for our kids, your comments. Do we have other people waiting to testify?
We do. Jeff Oswald.
I don't mind if anybody's sitting on the floor, but if you would please be aware, there are other people that would like to speak. If you could accommodate them, please.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent. Right. My name is Jeff Oswald. Last name is spelled O-S-W-A-L-D. My main topic is, there's many layers to this, but I want to address quarantine students and insufficient support. I've seen some traction recently on this, so I'm grateful about that, but I just kind of want to further touch on it. I'm a father of a fifth grader at Hayhurst and a seventh-grade son at Robert Gray. Recently, my fifth grader was quarantined. Someone in his class tested positive. He tested negative, thank goodness, but couldn't go back to school. I have a hard time wrapping my head around that. I mean, this wasn't like the quick, rapid test. This was like legit through Kaiser. He could play baseball that weekend, played five games, couldn't go to school. I'm not really here to argue that. That's what you guys have in place. It's kind of a fluid thing. We're all learning. It's difficult for everybody back there, up here, and who's not here. This is, this is difficult. I'm understanding of that. It's frustrating, though, because there was a kid in the class that threw up everywhere. That kid goes home, he can come back in 48 hours. No test, there's nothing to prove it. I get there's legalities, policies that I don't even understand. But I do understand that he came back to school in 48 hours after throwing up in front of my child. This was before we got information of the COVID test, right, of him being in close contact? But then my kid is home, and he can't return, and he's already tested negative. And we had a second test done just to make sure, because if I'm going to have him play baseball, I'm his coach, I want to make sure that I'm being, you know, safe and empathetic and compassionate to other people around. Anyhow, that, that's a little frustrating on that, but which leads me to the fact that while he was home, you know, I reached out to his teacher and I reached out to the principal, who I really like. The principal at, at Hayhurst, I think she's a wonderful woman and is doing a great job under the circumstances, but I was given no direction for what my child could do. Now, we've been all winging this for a long time. I'm no teacher. I have no degree. I'm pretty good at PE, you know, but I don't have all the basics.
Room for everyone.
Right? You know, I'm, I'm good at math. I can do that. I was told that he's not going to miss much, so don't worry about it. No one wants to hear that from an educator. I'll be honest, that pissed me off, straight up pissed me off. Because like, even if it's not like a deep theory, there's connection, there's bonding, there's routine, there's structure, there's getting back into things. So, that, that was one thing. You know, there's, there's no like canvas, there's no uploading, there's no, I'll try to wrap this up quick, sorry. There, there's nothing in place, and that is so frustrating to me. We have been doing this for so long. I understand that there's, there's kind of an ongoing thing with the district and the teachers. That's what I'm told. That's why there is nothing. But we have a conscious professional right for our students and kids. These are all of our kids, and whether it's streaming or it's a dedicated teacher, I don't know the answer to that. But we need to do something, and I'm not here to be divisive by any means. I'm not going to cast stones. We, we all are in this together, and I'll make this real quick. But I'm not here to ask the why we haven't or the how come it hasn't happened. But I'm here for specifics. Like, I want to know what day are we going to have something in play for our students to have something concrete that they will have, because it's inevitable. Kids are going to miss school. There's, there's no vaccinations for the elementary level. I'll be shocked if they're going by, if they're still there by Halloween, if, if the way things are dropping. So, I hope that that gets addressed. Thank you for your time. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. I'm going to remind people, if you would please keep the aisle clear so we don't have trip-and-fall hazards and to be respectful of others that are in the room, please, please keep the aisle clear so nobody trips over you.
Our next two commenters are virtual. We'll start. Karen, oh, sorry, Catherine Henderson. Catherine, just give us a second to get you displayed here.
Okay.
There you go. Go ahead and.
Okay. Can, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, okay. My name is Catherine Henderson, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N-H-E-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. She/her pronouns, sorry. And I'm a third-grade parent and sixth-grade science teacher with Portland Public Schools. Three days, it took three days. I managed to keep my family safe from COVID for a year and a half, but it only took three days for my son to come home from school and bring COVID into our home. Nothing else had changed. We hadn't gone anywhere new except for school. Friday, September 23rd, I noticed my son had a runny nose. Two days after that, I had a runny nose too. Our symptoms started mild, but I knew the ethical thing to do was to get us tested before either of us returned to school. I am vaccinated, and I teach science to 122 sixth graders. My students are mostly 11 years old, so they can't be vaccinated, and there's no cohorts with our middle schoolers. So had I reported to work with COVID, I could have exposed many families unknowingly. I called both schools as soon as I got the results around lunchtime on September 8th. The email sent out to the school communities notifying of a positive case was not sent out until the next evening, more than 24 hours later. Families need this information quicker so they can make decisions that are best for their situations. I'm a single mother to an eight-year-old boy and a three-year-old girl. My children are suffering because I'm a shell of a parent to them right now. I barely have the energy to make them dinner, and I have to sit down and take breaks while prepping them a meal. My students are suffering because they temporarily lost their science teacher that they were just getting to know. No substitute teacher picked up my job at school the first week I was gone, and so our staff was there scrambling to cover my classroom. I was very hesitant to send my unvaccinated third grader back to school in person at the height of our Delta surge, because I didn't feel it was the safe thing to do. I would have liked to have waited until he could be vaccinated. I wasn't given a choice. I was told he followed all the precautions while he was in school those three days. He wasn't closer than three feet from anyone else for more than 15 minutes, and he wore his mask properly. And if this is the case, then how did he come home with COVID? There's so much we still don't know about this virus. The precautions in school are not enough to keep our children safe. The few days I spent in my classroom, I was constantly reminding my students to put their mask over their noses and keep a three-feet distance. These are children. They do not comprehend what is at stake here. Have you taught middle school before? This is an impossible situation we are being put in. I urge you to reassess the decisions being made before other families come home with COVID. Just a minute, baby. Our children and our schools are not safe from this highly contagious airborne virus. Three feet is not enough. None of this is enough. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you. We have Nadia Coronado.
Hello, this is Nadia Coronado. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Last name Coronado, C-O-R-O-N-A-D-O. She/her pronouns. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize what my colleague and fellow parent just said. That was... Yeah. Thank you for sharing. Good evening, Director de Pass and members of the school board. I'm a Portland native with a long history of interacting with PPS since 1987. First as a student, then as a teacher, and now as a teacher mom, as my four children call it. Three of my children attend PPS schools in my fourth will in the near future. I am here before you in all three of those roles, former student, a teacher, and a parent. And I am truly and deeply disappointed by the lack of transparency, the lack of care, and above all, the lack of authenticity coming from my and our school board leadership. Tonight, I want to ask the simple question of what happens when a student in one of any of the classes my three sons are in? One is in middle school, so he's changing classes throughout the day. What happens when one of their classmates shares that they are COVID-positive with the school? What I know is that because my sons use masks and the students are separated to the extent possible, I will not receive a phone call, an email, or a text message. When I called to confirm this with their school, I was just sent to the general PPS page where there's no information about how contact tracing is happening or how notification is happening. How is that transparent? I asked the school district to let me know when a student, even if masked, even if my sons are masked, I asked the district to let me know when there is a COVID-positive case so that I can watch my own children more closely. Only one of my young children is vaccinated. He's 12, and the rest of them are all underage. I cannot vaccinate them. My sons will be spending hours with clusters of students inside. Yes, I know there is a filter in their classrooms. Yes, I know that their teachers are most likely vaccinated. Thank you to the 95% of vaccinated PPS staff, and I know that students will be closer to... And I know that students will be closer than three feet for longer than fifteen accumulated minutes in a school day, not because they are students, or because they are young people, children, but because they are humans. Please, a simple change, a robocall and a mass email all families that have students who share space during a school day when there's a COVID positive case, and follow up with phone calls in the five-supported PPS languages along with paper mailings. Be transparent, be caring, be authentic. Asymptomatic weekly testing for unvaccinated children, where is it? When is it happening? The last information was August thirtieth, which is two weeks ago now, when I contacted Oregon Health Authority. They told me, contact your school district. I haven't received any responses from my emails to the district. And finally, I want to touch upon the fact that we, teachers, are really struggling. Please, show us transparency, show us care, and show us authenticity. Hear us when we say this is hard. Supporting our students right now and during the past eighteen months has been very difficult. Care for us as we care for our students and their families. And again, be authentic in communication, be vulnerable, admit mistakes, apologize, and then make changes with input from historically ignored communities and families, with input from classroom teachers, and with input from our students.
Ms. Coronado?
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask you to conclude your comments, but thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't hear the beep.
That concludes who we have signed up for public comment.
Well, thank you again for your comments. Please feel free to connect with the senior board manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specifically you'd like to follow up with. And again, I appreciate you being here and taking the time to share your thoughts and concerns. We're gonna move to the student representatives' report. Student Representative Weinberg, would you please provide your report?
Yes. Good evening, board members and members of the public. As this is the first board meeting since school has started, I would like to congratulate students on the first two weeks of school. I would also like to share a few concerns, which have already been echoed by public comment. I have, and I've heard from other students, that passing periods and entering and exiting the school is a major concern and a source of anxiety for many. Students are shoulder to shoulder and often bottlenecked at staircases. Additionally, class sizes for certain subjects in certain classrooms are very large, with some classes not having desks for every student even. I bring these concerns up to provide insight for the board on what is happening inside of schools. I am, however, happy to report that I have seen consistent mask wearing with windows open and air filters on. Next, I would like to update the board on what I have been doing around mental health. I've met with district staff and am continuing to learn about systems, practices, and policies that PPS has around mental health. So far, key questions that have emerged are, how can we cultivate and protect inclusive learning environments in our classrooms? How can our referral process to mental health professionals be expanded and streamlined? And also, what does following up on referrals look like? Another topic I have been engaged in is student confidentiality. I look forward to continuing with these updates as the year progresses. Lastly, I would like to encourage PPS and this board to mandate COVID vaccinations for all students twelve and up. It is our responsibility to ensure that our schools are safe and our students and staff are healthy. This mandate would by no means be an easy task, but I believe that we can follow the Los Angeles Unified School District's lead and take this step, and be a role model for the other Oregon school districts. For such a mandate to be successful, it would be important that the district recognizes that students and families may be vaccine hesitant for a number of reasons. As a district, we have a responsibility to acknowledge these concerns and inform families that school safety is our priority. We would need to prioritize communication about the importance of getting vaccinated and every family's role in creating a safe school environment. We would also need to gain an understanding of why families have COVID vaccine distrust and combat misinformation wherever present. With all said, I hope PPS will consider a COVID vaccine mandate for students twelve and up. I'm looking forward to a fun and successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committee updates this evening? Has everyone met with staff? There's an audit committee, I'm sorry, policy committee update.
We did have a committee meeting. So we met on September eighth with a new committee and essentially was an overview of the... Do you want me to go ahead and give the update?
You might as well, yeah.
Is that, isn't that where you were?
It's later in the...
Oh, the recisions are later.
The recisions.
Is it the update?
Yeah. This is a committee update.
Okay, I'll give the committee update, because we did meet.
We did meet, and are you...
Has anyone else had an initial meeting? Or if you haven't, I would encourage you to schedule with the staff liaison and...
I know that the Intergovernmental Committee's first meeting is scheduled, as well as the charter. So we are, Herman and I are on there, and I think Facilities and Audit have also scheduled their first meeting.
Yep. Excellent. Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, so we had an organizing meeting, and I want to recognize the people who came and testified tonight about climate policy. We had a good discussion. We have subsequently had a meeting with staff and have community engagement that will be scheduled with, that we discussed during the committee meeting. They'll come back to one of our mid-October meeting with feedback from the community engagement. And then subsequently, we'll either move to, or make a recommendation to the board to have a first reading of that committee in November, or make changes based on the community feedback and then move it to the full board for a first reading. We also had a discussion about the vacation policy, because it is, we've got several conflicting ones. We also talked just this year about our sort of work plan and what we need to do and what we want to do. So more to come, but we had a good start, and I thank the committee members and staff for the kickoff.
This is just a really random question. The board has a vacation policy?
No.
Does it apply to us, and is it paid?
No, no such luck. All three of them, although they conflict, none of them cover the board. Sorry.
Julia, is there an update on the Rose Quarter? I know that they released information about capping, and I just wondered what we knew about that, how that might affect Tubman and our continued conversations with them about moving Tubman.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So there was a, on September ninth, and I apologize, I didn't get concussion last week, so I didn't get an update out. But there was a meeting of the OTC, and they had a sort of conditional approval of a design that is the design, it's hybrid three, that's supported by Alba-Bina Vision Trust, that we have been supportive of. The issue of Tubman came up primarily as a, everybody in agreement that it would make sense as part of this project to move the school, and the big question is how to pay for it. I want to just call out Courtney Westling and the Facility staff Liz Large for being part of a work group of working with the state on what we, this board has passed the resolution that calling on the state to pay for the rebuilding of Harriet Tubman in a healthier environment. And we've had conversations with the state treasury, with the governor's staff, and most recently, the day I talked to House Speaker Tina Kotek, all embracing the concept that there is that this is something that the state has responsibility for. And so we're in the process of putting together what we call the Capital Stack. Director Scott probably knows what that is, but, or it could be also called the Couple Together. So those conversations are happening, and again, the Facility staff and PPS staff have provided lots of information that hopefully we'll have a positive outcome. And the board resolution has been shared with elected leadership in the state and also the federal delegation and also with the OTC. So that was very helpful to have. I thank my colleagues for that as well.
Thank you. That was a great question. We're gonna move on to back-to-school, an update, back-to-school update, and I would like to invite the superintendent to provide an update. Would you like to introduce the next item?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I in turn would like to invite some of our senior staff up. We'll start with our deputy superintendents and chief operating officer. You'll notice I ceded my time for a Suits report tonight, because everything I want to talk about is about back-to-school, a wrap-up on our summer programming, as well as a reflection on first day of school, and I know we're gonna be doing that later on in the agenda. But tonight, we wanted to make sure that the team shared with directors and the community, where are we with enrollment, with staffing, with transportation, with some of our continued health and safety efforts? So they're gonna be speaking about that this evening and taking your questions, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Bird.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. Good evening, board directors, Chair DePass, and Student Representative Weinberg. Tonight, we have several updates for you. We're beginning our third week of school, and tonight, we're pleased to provide directors an update on several policy topics, including our efforts to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students and staff, a staffing update, including areas where we're currently experiencing operational challenges, and an update on our latest online learning academy numbers. Tonight, I'm joined, as always, by Dan Young, who serves as the chief operating officer for PPS. Dr. Peter Graven from Oregon Health Sciences University and a member of our health advisory panel has been modeling COVID-nineteen forecasts in Oregon from the beginning of this pandemic. The graph there shows his forecasts are in red, and then the, I'm sorry, black, and the actual numbers are in red. You'll see there that he's used data on COVID variants, state and county policies such as mask mandates, community compliance, and those mandates and guidance, vaccination rates, and other data. OHSU's current forecast is based on Oregonians showing increasingly higher compliance with masking mandates and refraining from gathering indoors in large groups, as well as an increase in vaccination rates in response to the COVID surge. He notes that COVID indicators are flat or decreasing, and predicts a steady decline from now until the last date on that graph is December twenty-fifth.
So is that apex today or this week, or?
It is, it's, I think it was actually last week was the apex, and it's predicted to go down.
Thank you, Dr. Bird. Good evening, directors. Readily available COVID-nineteen data is important to understand the impact of the virus in our schools and our community. Today, we rolled out our revamped COVID-nineteen dashboard and included a link to our PPS homepage to this dashboard. The new dashboard provides detailed visibility into isolation and quarantine data with customizable date ranges and individual school metrics, including data regarding off-site and onsite exposures. This dashboard is expected to be updated four times every day. It also includes up-to-date vaccine status information, as well as staff vaccination status.
Excuse me, can you go back to that slide real quick? I was looking at this earlier today. Can you tell me the relationship with the line graph, with the total, individual, isolating, quarantine by day, and the total number of all schools? Because I was looking at it earlier today, the numbers was different.
Yeah, that's a great question. If I understand correctly, and I also was looking at it earlier today, the graph shows total cumulative, and the sum, the bigger totals, are for the date range that's provided. I believe that's how that works.
Okay, so if, so for instance, on the fourteenth, they had numbers of ninety-three of the isolation and two-hundred and some, and three-hundred and some on the other two. But then on the all-school one, is it, so you're saying one is accumulative and one is what? Because I would think the all-school would be accumulative as well.
What I believe it is, is the cumulative for all of the data is the graph, and then it's just the cumulative of the specified date range is what the numbers are. Let me follow up with that to make sure that I'm not giving any incorrect information, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, I actually had the same observation that Gary did, so I think one of two things is happening, as someone who deals with dashboards. It may be pulling the, you know, the y-axis incorrectly, or it's not labeled well, and so either one of those. But I think it would be good to get that fixed, because it was confusing when I looked at the same thing. I thought, wait a minute, if these are the numbers, is this cumulative? Because that's not the way it's labeled. So it's a fantastic dashboard, and I just want to say thank you for the team putting it together, but I think that does jump out when people look at it.
Yep, that's a correction we'll make. Okay, we are happy to report that the majority of PPS staff are vaccinated. More specifically, ninety-five percent are vaccinated, based on eighty percent of staff reporting. Additionally, in an effort to obtain information on student vaccinations, on Thursday this week, families will receive a communication requesting information regarding vaccination status of students twelve and older, as well as questions measuring the interest in onsite vaccination clinics for younger students when they become available. And we will share this data when it is collected. We'd also like to let you know that we will soon be scheduling a board work session to consider making COVID-nineteen vaccination required for all eligible students. This meeting is an opportunity to discuss the merits of this option and obtain advice from local and national health experts.
All right, so as you know, we have been offering certain types of tests, and we're gonna talk tonight about the expansion of these. We currently offer testing for symptomatic students and staff, and we have this, that's been going on since last spring. We're now offering also, in partnership with the OHA, we offer our staff members who elect to participate in a screen testing program. It's at-home testing. They send it to a lab, they get their results back. And the third bullet up there is what everyone is talking about, and that is the screen testing for students. So we're very excited to participate in this screen testing program in partnership with OHSU. Statewide screen testing is in collaboration with the Oregon Health Authority, OHSU, Multnomah County, and our health partners at MESD. The project has many components, as you might imagine, and some are still in process. Timeline for district-wide rollout is dependent on various factors that are actually outside of PPS's control, including the delivery of additional testing machines to OHSU and alignment with statewide planning and reporting. We have one school currently in the testing, in the pilot program, and we expect to be able to add schools in the next four to six weeks, depending on the timeline set by OHSU. We hope that these efforts will optimize in-person educational days for our schools. We continue to advocate for more schools being added to this program.
Dr. Bird, can you elaborate a little bit on that last point? Until that program and the availability of testing for our students ramps up through OHSU and the county, do we have a Plan B, or are we, what are we doing to help facilitate testing for students in the absence of that option?
So the only option we have as a school district is to participate in the statewide program, and we have met with we have met with OHSU and with OHA over the last several weeks we've been meeting with them. We did get, the school that we're piloting with is Fabian, and, you know, and we are, there's four schools that are piloting across the region right now, and as they get more, it's really dependent on equipment that's being delivered to OHSU and the ability for them to ramp up the operation of the tests. So we can't, we don't have any other testing programs other than symptomatic tests, which is a different product than the screen testing. So until then, we're gonna continue to, you know, wear masks and have multiple layers of mitigation in place.
Would you care to make an educated guess about how soon or long it'll be before we have much more widespread asymptomatic testing?
Probably about six weeks before we have multiple schools that are, that the labs are able to handle.
I have a question as well. Would we, are we expecting that this testing protocol would be available in every building, or are we...
Yes, eventually, that's the hope, is that it's available district-wide. But again, it's dependent upon the equipment being at OHSU and available for them to be able to process their lab results.
Okay, and then also, because we saw the graph with the peak happening, I can't remember what you said the date was, but cases are dropping, is that, I'm wondering, like, timing-wise, how that's coinciding with this effort in six weeks to get testing in every building? And we're gonna see a steep, a pretty steep decline in cases predicted.
Yeah, it's supposed to continue to drop, but we, of course, we don't know what other, you know, we don't know if there's new variants that are gonna be coming.
There is, yeah, the Mew, the Mew.
So the testing will still be necessary, I think, I think.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it's an important point, and thank you. I think it's an important part of the conversation. And I guess I just want to reframe it a little bit. We, as a district, are eager and ready to implement this as soon as it is available from OHSU and the state. And I guess I say that because I think, you know, personally, I would like to see this. I know we hear a lot from our community about wanting to see this, and nationally, we want to see it, and I guess I would just encourage members of our community who also want to see it to start directing. And I guess I would just encourage members of our community who also want to see it to start directing some of the advocacy towards the people who are actually implementing it and seeing if we can speed up a little bit their process. Because as a district, we don't have the ability to do this short of them rolling it out. But if they were told that they could do it tomorrow, we would be ready to do it tomorrow. Is that accurate?
Yes, we would be ready to implement it as soon, and we, they are aware of that. As soon as we can bring more schools online, we are ready and able to do so.
And that fits with my question, which is what can we as a board do to encourage OHA, OHSU, Multnomah County, and MESD to ramp this up more quickly? Is there any advocacy we as a board can do to move the needle on this?
Yeah, I'm certain, you know, advocacy of any type is welcome, as we are eager to have screen testing in all of our school buildings. So the program is in cooperation with OHSU.
Okay, so email OHSU. Got it?
And OHA.
And OHA, okay.
Okay, as you know, we've been sending out regular communications since before the beginning of school. And we have three communications that will go out this week. You saw one earlier today, perhaps right before this meeting started, that introduced our COVID-19 dashboard that Dan spoke about. We're also providing a one-page reference guide for families to describe several different scenarios of how a positive case might be identified and then describes the district's response to that. So we've gotten, as we've been in school, we have different scenarios of how children may be exposed. And we want to just provide a one-page document so parents know exactly what to expect from the school and what the timeline is. We've provided this information before, but we want to reinforce that and provide it again, also just with some more description. That should go out on Thursday, the 16th. And additionally, on the 16th, we'll be sending out a student vaccination survey. This information will help us more quickly identify students who need to be quarantined in the event of exposure to COVID-19. If we know the vaccination status, that's a different answer, if you're vaccinated versus non-vaccinated. Additionally, it will help us prepare for the day when children ages five to 11 are eligible for vaccines. It will help us set up those vaccine clinics on our school, in our school buildings. So we're going to gather as much information as we can from parents, and that will go home on the 16th this week.
Dr. Bird, I have a question about that second piece, which I can't wait till September 16th to ask about scenarios. So one of the things we're hearing a lot about from parents is that when an announcement goes out that someone has tested positive in their school, then there's a lag before parents are contacted and guardians are contacted about where, you know, whose classroom was that? And was my child exposed? And can you just talk a little bit about like that testing process, that confidentiality expectation? Because that is really a sticking point for families these days.
Yeah, we're, as soon as we're aware of a COVID case, we certainly put the team together, and that includes our partners with MESD in Multnomah County. And then there's a process that we go through where we need testing, we identify the close contacts. And what's been an important component is identifying who those close contacts are so they can be notified right away. So that is the priority. If you are close contact, we want to make sure that you are aware of that. And then notification goes out to the community that lets them know that close contacts have been contacted directly. They're aware of what requirements they have, but letting the entire community know that there's been a case in that school. We are looking to add additional resources so that as we do have more cases that come in, we're able to process that quicker and as quickly as possible.
By resources, do you mean nurses? Because isn't there a bit of a lag in actually getting the confirmation back from MESD or from the nurses?
Yeah, I'm happy to comment on that. I think what you're hearing in each of these areas where we all want to do better and do our best, there's a capacity issue. You have it at OHSU and the contact tracing that is done by MESD. So in my conversations with Superintendent Coakley there, he's recognized this, and he's redeploying his internal resources and gathering additional ones because he's heard our feedback that we need to make sure that the tracing, the contacting, the phone calls, that they work much more efficiently and a quicker timeline. So that is something that already he's taken action on, making sure additional staff is identified to do that. There's a volume question on all of these issues statewide.
I do think this is really, a really important point because until families know specifically whether or not they were in close contact, that everyone assumes that they were or they could have been.
So can I just jump in? Because I thought I heard you say two different things. And, I mean, I thought I heard you say that families weren't being contacted until after the general notification went out. But I believe actually close contacts are being notified prior to that going out. I know there have been two, two potential exposures in my children's school. And by the time we got notified, it was clear that, I mean, they had already notified close contacts. So I believe that is the protocol. I just want to make sure we're being really clear about what the protocols are.
That is the protocol, and that is what is in the notice that goes out to the community, that close contacts have been directly notified. So if you're getting the community letter, that means you are not a close contact.
That's something really important for us to read. Director Brim Edwards had a question. Did you have a question too? And then I've got one as well.
I was also just wanting to tell Terry that there's quite a ring in here. It's a little hard to hear because there's a ringing sound. Thank you, that's better.
Thank you. Did you want to go ahead and then Director Konstam?
Thank you, Chair DePass. First of all, thanks for the dashboard. I'm really appreciative of that because I think information is very powerful. And I have a question about, and it allows you to spot trends and all sorts of things if you have data over time. So my question about the dashboard is, it's my understanding we're going, we were going to get it every Tuesday. And I'm just curious if it's being updated four times a day. I'm just thinking about the information about people knowing about something that's happening in their school and then it not appearing in the dashboard until the following week. And a feeling of a sense that they're not going to know when it is. So I don't know if there's a reason why we couldn't have a real-time dashboard or have a more explanation at the, you know, somewhere where it explains like why something may not appear. Because if people know it's there, but it's not reported, then it's like, well, is there something wrong? When it may be, there may be a logical reason, like somebody didn't actually report it, and we don't have it in the system.
Yeah, I think those are good comments. I just want to say, I want to take notes and take that back to the team that's worked on the dashboard that just released it today. So I think this is really good feedback, so we can improve it and we can maybe even improve it within 24 hours.
My headline was, I think it's great. So I just want to make sure that that gets put out there, so it's not a criticism. I think it's really helpful and can be even better.
Also, it would be nice to show on the dashboard when it was refreshed.
I have a comment, a couple of questions. One is just so there would be, there's multiple paths once there's an exposure. I still don't understand, I guess, if someone's exposed, like what are the pathways to notifying parents and close contacts? And the other thing I wanted to bring up, and I guess this was developed in Oregon, at Oregon State University. Go Beavs, the, this idea of testing sewer for the presence of COVID. And it's not an opt-in because everybody uses the bathroom at school. And so it's a way of testing a level or a load of COVID within building by building, actually. And so I'm wondering if that's, and that's not disrupting anybody, it's not sticking anything up your nose, you know? And it's someone's job to actually do that. I wonder if we would consider that long-term because I guess COVID is not going to go away. But it would give us an idea of the amount of viral load in any given community. And it's a technology that's been very, it's been effective at predicting. It's, it's, but it's nasty. But it's also effective and it's non-invasive, except for the person doing the job. But it's not invasive to anybody, and it might be a good way to understand what the load is per building, maybe even prior to an outbreak.
Yeah, I'm happy to look into that and see how we might be able to operationalize and utilize the data that comes out of that. So I'll have a look into that.
That would be in your, in your department, I imagine.
In a weird way, yes.
Yeah, but I'm also happy to see this and also happy to know it's updated, the dashboard, four times, four times a day. But the first question was, so how does, how does something get on the dashboard? Is there a, like a clear process for school administrators, teachers, adults to discover, notify? How does it get to, how does it, how do we get from a school building to the dashboard?
Hey, I want to take down the notes about that detail of data, when it's collected and then when it gets on to the dashboard. So we can be really clear and be able to convey that information. Because if it's updating four times a day, does that mean that that data came in today? Or is that the data from yesterday or what that is? So we will answer those questions.
I have a question. So what is the timeline from the time a kid gets, or I guess is notified that they have COVID to the time it gets to the, I guess, the kid that's around them and then to the time it gets to the general school public? So what is that timeline? So if I get it today and I tell my teacher or whoever I possess a positive for COVID, what is that timeline that the kids I was around get that information? And then the school let the public know?
Sure. I think the answer is that it will vary some depending on the individual case. And so when it happens or where it happens, how much data needs to be collected about close contacts? And then how many individuals need to be contacted about close contacts? I think generally, this is happening within a day or so. But again, happy to go back to the team that is, that's doing that, that contact tracing and gets some more specific data about what they're averaging. And then what they're hoping also to achieve as we get additional resources from MESD.
All right, I think I'd like to ask one question, since we're throwing people to the data team. Data is a crazy thing. Like, once you start, it's like you can go all over the place with it. But I do want to see how we're looking at, or if we're looking at, where we're looking at, going back to Ms. Mashad, the statement that she made. Are we tracking, so I know we're looking at what happens in school. But what happens, how are we tracking the asymptomatic students that go home? They're walking along. I live in the, in the neighborhood, so I see the kids leaving class. I see them at the bus stop without masks on, shaking it up, doing whatever they're doing. Then they go home. Are we tracking or is it possible to keep up with who they're getting sick? Because they may be asymptomatic, but they're going home and they're infecting somebody else who's end up going to the hospital, who ends up getting sick and doing whatever. So again, that's why I say when you start looking at data, it gets so expansive and it's hard to try to track everything. But to simply say that by tracking the student, we're tracking our, we're tracking our real impact is also inaccurate, right? Because we don't know what the kids are taking home to other people because, simply because they're not showing, they're not showing the symptoms. And so how are we going to, are we going to start looking at that? Are we going to start thinking about that as we're starting to make our decisions about how COVID is actually impacting our schools? Do we have a plan for that aspect of it? Because we could be, and I know it's terrible, but I just watched that movie Contagion that happened in 2011. And a sneeze here caused an infection to spread out in several people's homes that, but this person was fine. Matt Damon never got it throughout the whole show. But Matt, it happened so broad everywhere else as a result that, you know, something that his household had something to do with. And so I guess that's what I'm looking at. When we start measuring the impact of what COVID-19 and what this Delta variant is doing in our schools, in our classrooms, are we taking into consideration that the school is one part of a larger system? And how what's happening in our school is actually impacting and infecting the rest of the system that it's a part of?
Thank you. I think, just, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Director Scott.
Just in relation to that, thanks, Director Green. I guess I just want to say, because I think we need to be careful, the cases that we're finding in schools are not necessarily cases that happen in schools. And that's a really important point to continue to make because there were, Delta variant was spiking in July, and it was spiking in August when kids weren't in school. There's also an argument that some of the cases we're finding are actually because kids are in school and that some of the testing we're doing on symptomatics. So I am not in any way saying that spread is not going to happen in schools, but I think we need to be careful when we talk about these cases to not say that because a, you know, a child was, you know, determined to have COVID or was reported to the school that it happened in the school. It may, in fact, often does happen out in the community and is being caught. So I just, I think.
We also need to think about our football games that these kids are going to. That's not in school, but that's a school sanctioned event. And when you get all those people together in one place and they doing everything that they're doing, then although that wasn't in the school, it's a school sanctioned event. And again, I'm not arguing. I'm pointing out, I think what we're all pointing out is the reality that this is much bigger than just simply the classroom. The, it's, the stuff that we're experiencing and the stuff that we're seeing is the kids are, they're going other places. They're doing other things, and they're around other people and involved in other stuff, and then they come to class. And so even though it didn't, the outbreak may not have started in school, they're coming to the school. So they're still impacting, infecting the school. I mean, I guess, I don't, I'm struggling to, I'm struggling to separate it. I'm really struggling to separate it happened in school or didn't happen in school when they're all coming to schools. So I guess that's where my struggle is at, so.
Sure. I just want to say that is why it's really important to get vaccinated if you can. Like, it's not just my family and me. I'm not, I'm not even wearing this mask for myself tonight. You know, I'm wearing it as a vaccinated person because I don't want to give you COVID in case I have it and I don't know about it. So I feel like it's, there's a community responsibility that comes with this too. Like, this is like keeping our kids safe. This is keeping, being vaccinated and following protocols even when you're outside. You know, like the mask mandate for us to be outside when we're masked, when we're in community. It's up to everybody. It's hard to point a finger at one specific like location or whatever because it's incumbent on all of us as a community. I think we said earlier in the agenda, this is a time to come together. And this is a time to come together. We're not going to solve it by sitting here pointing at each other and where it's happening. It's happening in our community. It's going to happen in schools as a result. And it's up to, it's up to all of us to take responsibility for not just ourselves, but for the community at large.
And I think another piece of that responsibility is exactly what you were saying, is, you know, if it, we won't necessarily know until we get the asymptomatic testing in, if an asymptomatic student takes it home to a family member. But then what we need is families to report to us that there's a sick parent or a sick aunt so we can begin to track that data. So that's part of it too, is we need to all be transparent with each other. And I know some people have not wanted to disclose COVID positives because there can be judgment around it and there's fear around it. So it's part of our shared communal responsibility to report that and to share it and to communicate it. But some families may not want to tell us that, you know, grandma is sick because they don't want the kid to be excluded from school. So that's another piece of how do we care for each other? And how do we have that information so that we can really look at the impact that's happening in the schools?
It's a, it's a, it's a big nut to crack. And we're, none of us have deep experience in, deep experience in managing through a pandemic. I think we're, I speak for myself, learning as we, learning as we live. I'm going to move this along so we can, oh, yes. We're going to take, we'll take a 10-minute break to give everybody a chance to breathe and stretch. And we'll be back at 7:41. Thank you. Let's, let's, let's get this party started. Can we, can we have people out? That's important, okay. It's never late for anything. Where did we leave off? Still in the hot seat, so I'd ask if we could wrap up, but do we, do we have any further? We've got more slides. Okay, thank you.
We, I know that you want to hear about continuity of learning and our enrollment numbers.
And here's that information.
Thank you.
One topic we've gotten, many questions about is how students can access the curriculum if they are quarantined.
Excuse me, I don't think your mic is on.
Oh, no. Is it on now?
I'm Terry.
Yeah. We appreciate that teachers cannot be in two places at one time. And depending on the number of students who are in quarantine for a particular classroom, the effort to prepare assignments for students will indeed vary. We also know that in a normal school year, students are out due to We also know that in a normal school year, students are out due to illness, and we have an obligation to provide access to the assignments so that students don't fall behind during their timeout. So there are essentially four ways that students can access materials. One, uh, the first way is teachers may choose to publish assignments on Seesaw or Canvas. This, uh, is what has been the technology they've used over the last 18 months, and that is available for them to use still. Uh, the second way is that teachers may provide students with a Google Meet link, or make use of the Polycom Studio equipment to allow students to participate in class, or at least log on and hear the class that's, uh, live if they are at home and well enough to do that. Uh, the teacher may also choose to provide students with work that can be picked up at the school office. That's sort of the, uh, way things used to be done when kids were going to be out for an extended period of time. And then beginning, uh, Monday, K-5 students will be able to access district-created resources that are aligned to the district's scope and sequence. There'll be 14 days' worth of, uh, material that is aligned to the scope and sequence on a district website that we'll unveil, uh, it'll actually be ready into this week. We'll unveil it for next, uh, Monday. I should note that these plans are our current guidance, and they are subject to bargaining with PAT for impacts to teacher workload. So just keep that in mind as we go through, uh, this. But that's what principals have been, uh, giving guidance at this point. Also, I want to talk to you about our.
Excuse me, I have a.
Director Pompstam? Question about that. So, um, in our, uh, safety agreement, which we'll be considering later this evening, it makes it clear that there's no expectation for Simulcast, but we know that some of our teachers were enthusiastic adopters of Simulcast and kept their technology in their rooms. So is there, I'm assuming there's no prohibition?
There is no.
Um, and do we have a sense of whether or not we are, we do have teachers, or we will have teachers who will be taking advantage of that?
We know that we had, uh, teachers in the spring that did that during hybrid instruction, so, uh, and it was completely voluntary. That continues to be the, the case right now. It's voluntary. Nobody's required to do it, uh, and I anticipate that will continue to be the case. But we do have equipment available. If teachers want it, they, uh, can contact us and we'll get it to them. But schools have it at their, in their buildings. Okay, so last week, we welcomed back over 3100 kindergartners. So you'll see there, there's a change in enrollment from the last time we, uh, updated you. Kindergarten enrollment continues to, uh, evolve every day. And of another significant, uh, number on this graph is you can see that our high school enrollment has increased by 8% from October 1st last year. So we have 1,027 additional high school students this year than we had, uh, last year. So our enrollment picture continues to, uh, change. You'll notice at the elementary level, uh, first to fifth grade, that is the biggest drop. And, uh, we continue to monitor that.
Can I, on the enrollment, really quick question. Wha- what's your high-level takeaway? So, you know, we had a drop in 2021, which I, I think we all expected. Is this just sort of a, a half bounce back? And would we expect to go, or, or longer-term trends were already sort of trending down a little bit, I think, right? Just even pre-COVID. I'm just, just what's your takeaway from these numbers?
So I, I, uh, I don't have the, you know, the kind of historical perspective right now. I'd have to look into that. But I will say that, um, we did expect kindergarten numbers to increase. And, um, it's not surprising to me that elementary numbers are a little bit lower because those students are unable to be vaccinated. And, uh, you know, we have heard from parents about that concern. Uh, in high school, we knew that that was coming. We knew that there's a bubble in high school for, over the next several years. And, um, so that, that was anticipated.
But it's a lot more than projected.
Right. It's more, it's, yeah, 8% higher than last October and more than in projection.
Is, are you, do you know what to attribute it, is that in migration, people coming from other places during COVID, or how?
This, I, uh, do not have information, or we can, I can talk to people in enrollment, and we can get some answers for you in writing about the trends.
As the new guy, could you give us a little bit of history in the last five years of what's been happening in PPE? I'm totally kidding.
We have more new, we have newer people.
Exactly.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sure.
Um, do we have preschool numbers?
I can get you the, uh, early, uh, childhood numbers. We don't have them on this graph, but I'll get those for you.
What a great opportunity for a public announcement here. Parents out there, if you're looking for a pre-K opportunity, we still have hundreds of seats available. So if you have a four-year-old who would like to take advantage of Head Start, our teachers are waiting for you.
Where do they, uh, where do they go if they want to enroll?
P, uh, they can, uh, pps.net, and there's a, this page for early childhood. They can find information there, and they can also call our, uh, enrollment, uh, and transfer center. They can find information there. All right, we also want to update you on school staffing. So our talent team continues to work to fill vacancies at, uh, PPS. We currently, as of today, have 143 classroom vacancies, uh, out of about 4,000 positions. So that's, that's the, the larger number. 143 are open. And, uh, we continue to recruit for those positions. We also have about 40, uh, full-time custodial vacancies that, uh, we're continuing to recruit for. I know you've all heard about our, uh, school bus driver shortage, and Dan is here to talk so, about that and about some strategies that we're using to mitigate those issues.
You know, before you go there, the 143, um, are the proportionately, um, what schools are those in? Have we done a, like, looking at them from a, the perspective of whether they're our highest need schools?
We will get that, uh, information for you. Uh, we can, we can give that to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
As we talk about staffing as well, I just was curious. I saw the note that 95% of our teachers were vaccinated and that 1% are in process. Do we have numbers for our classified staff or bus drivers on percentage vaccinated?
Yeah, the, the 95% is, is on all staff that have reported, uh, but we can get a desegregation, uh, by type.
One follow-up. You said 95% that have reported, so is there a percentage that haven't reported if they've been vaccinated?
For 86% of staff have reported.
I'm confused. So if only 86% of staff have reported, what's happening with that other 14%? Are they choosing not to report and then are doing the testing? Like, what are our protocols, um, for those folks?
Yep. So they, they, um, have to report, or they filed an exemption, uh, that's being reviewed, or they, uh, have to submit to, uh, weekly testing. So I know there are several exemptions that are, are being processed by HR. So that accounts for the difference in numbers of people.
So I'm a pastor, which means I don't do a lot of math, but 80, so 86% have reported. And of that 86, 95% have said they're vaccinated. So is that 5% who've reported that they're not vaccinated, they're also then maybe filing exemptions, getting tested, all the lovely things you just said?
Correct.
Great. So what, if we had a hard and fast sort of estimated number, what number of staff are in that 14% plus 5% of 86?
Sharon Reese will come to answer that question.
Yeah, see, you are in HR, you do math better than I do. Thanks, Sharon.
Should we do buses while we're?
Okay, great. Uh, so as you're aware, uh, we are experiencing an ongoing and acute shortage of licensed bus drivers that is causing some of our bus routes to be delayed or canceled for that day. This challenge is not unique to Portland or Oregon, and staff are wor- working very hard every day to provide as much service to our students as possible, communicate the impacts to our schools, students, and communities, uh, and of course, recruit new drivers. Uh, we will, and our community to keep the board updated on our progress as any significant changes happen.
And I, I just want to say thank you to ODE, because I know that the Oregon Department of Education actually was working overtime one of the weekends to try to get bus driver candidates certified and background checked and cleared so that we could, um, serve our students. So I just want to say thank you to our partners who are also going above and beyond to make sure that our students can get to and from school safely. So, so thank you, ODE, for that extra work and overtime for the PPS students and all students in Oregon.
All right, and finally, just want to give you a quick update on, on, online learning academy. So as of today, we have 651 students who are enrolled. There are still 648 students on the waitlist. Uh, we continue to welcome students off the waitlist as space becomes available. And we are, are continuing to onboard additional teachers, uh, for that. So, uh, we can, those, we have, uh, requested that students that are on the waitlist, they should attend school until, until, attend their regular school until such time as we can take them off the waitlist. And that concludes our presentation tonight. I think Sharon has some information for you about math. And after that, we'll take any other questions.
Let, let me tell you, I love math, and I've vol- I've volunteered in third-grade math for nine years. And as soon as I'm done on school board, I'm going back to third-grade math, because it is the best.
Can I ask a question about, um, before Sharon goes, uh, just about a facility issue? So, um, I, I think there was, at least I've heard, uh, a lot of appreciation about the decision to have outdoor, um, meal times. And, um, that sort of, that's been embraced and everything else. Um, we have rain coming up, and one of the things that, just based on conversations, especially with elementary students, uh, parents, is the inequity of, like, um, some students, the parents have gone to Costco to get tables and are setting them up. And then, and they also have covered play, uh, covered places to sit on. And so I'm just curious, um, how we're going to, uh, approach that as we get to the rainy, the rainy season? And just whether we're okay with some kids having access to sitting at tables and other kids not? I know, not everybody cares, but just, um.
So we actually provided, uh, budget for every school to, uh, purchase, uh, and they could do kind of a range of things, like some schools purchased tables, some schools purchased seating. Uh, so every school was provided that for, uh, for, uh, their use. And then Dan has some information about covered areas.
Yeah, so we're working on tent options, uh, that we can, that can be somewhat uniformed throughout the, the schools that need them. We know that, that the pop-up tents really don't work very well. They break easily. They don't provide very much cover, especially when you're trying to keep pre-heat distancing outside. Uh, and they've got some other issues as far as staff setting them and taking them down. The big tents have some challenges as well, particularly if they're too big. They actually require permitting, and that becomes a long process. Uh, and there's availability challenges as well. So we're, we're working right now to find that happy medium of which ones are not too big, but not too small, that we can, uh, put out on those, out on those sites where the other schools need them. So we're literally working on that today.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that's, um, this idea of spatial justice. I was really curious, um, which, which of our facilities had covered spaces and which didn't? And who has access to, you know, and we're all Oregonians, so it's just water, as I say. But it's, it'd be nice to get some covering in. What's the permitting, um, we have to permit a tent?
Yes.
If it's over a certain size.
Okay, it's a size thing on our own property.
Correct. Yep. And there's other requirements that it has as far as distance from other structures and flammability and, and things of those natures. So we don't want to get into too many processes that are just going to take us too long. So we're, we're trying to find that happy medium.
Can I ask if the permitting is done through the city of Portland? Or is it, is it fire, or is it?
I believe it is through.
Bureau of Development Services?
But I don't know that for certain and can find out. But I believe this is mostly fire marshal requirement.
Okay. Because I would encourage the district to talk to someone in the Bureau of Development Services and see if there's a rapid or an exemption, emergency exemption because of the COVID Delta, because of the Delta variant, and just because of COVID in general, and because it might be a good idea, just in case of an emergency, to have tents available, in the case of a large earthquake, for instance. But, but for now, um, I, I would, I, I can actually, um, I can look for a name for you if you want. Someone that can wave all of the red tape and get us protected.
I'll take it. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you for, um, expediting this idea of getting something done for tents for outside. I was at, um, Cesar Chavez, um, for one of my walkthroughs, um, on the first day of school, which was absolutely great. I didn't get to talk about it because I left for Jamaica very shortly thereafter. But, um, as, as much as they were amazing school and doing everything that they can to try to keep up with distance, when it comes to lunchtime, they're going to be strapped because they actually have nowhere to go. They, they've got a, a small space that is covered, and then the rest of their amazing outdoor facility. I mean, it's, we need to actually do something with it. And I pray that one day we'll actually be able to talk about that and start thinking about how we can really utilize that space to benefit the school and the community, because right now it's not doing either. But in the meantime, to think about a way that we can get them some, some tents. So I'm grateful, uh, for schools like, like, um, Chavez and like George that don't have that kind of space. So I just wanted to say, I know I complain about stuff, and, but now I want to just pause to say thank you. So thank you for expediting that.
Appreciate the feedback.
And I, I have a quick question. So you talked about the permitting. So what is the consequence if we go ahead and do what we need to do for our kids now? What is the consequence for the district? You know, yes.
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know if I have the exact answer for that. But we are looking, we're hoping to find something that we can just, uh, not have to worry about that. But if, if we come into a situation where there are permitting requirements, we're certainly, uh, will look to pull all levers that we need to and, uh, any support that we can get.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you, colleagues, for your, um, for your questions. I love hearing the diversity of questions that are coming out. Um, we all have different things we focus on, so, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Director Lowry, uh, let me give you some additional information about our response rate. It has gone up, uh, since we put these numbers together. We're close to 88% response rate. Uh, the query went out to about 7,700 employees, and we've had 6,900 people, uh, respond. But in that intervening time, we've hired several hundred more people. So the numbers are moving, uh, regularly. Uh, we have 90, about 95% are fully vaccinated among the remaining 5%. About 1 and 1/2% are in the process of getting vaccinated. Another 1% are planning to get vaccinated, so they're in process. And they have to complete that process by October 18th. If they do not, uh, then they are no longer qualified to work with the district. Uh, and then we have, we are processing through religious exceptions and medical exceptions or deferrals.
And I, ha- has the vaccine requirement affected our bus driver shortage? Do you see any correlation between, um, that?
I will answer that. And yes, we have seen some correlation from that. And we have had bus drivers leave recently, and they have cited that as one of the reasons for leaving.
Do we have other districts in our region that are exempting, um, employee groups where there's a labor shortage, because I know that's happening around the country?
This is now an Oregon requirement, so there's no.
Oh, yeah, I guess it is, yeah.
Or exception, uh, allowed, other than the medical, uh, exception, the religious exception, or a pregnancy deferral.
Thank you, and I'm going to move us along so we can get to the next, um, item. Thank you very much, um, for your updates. Um, we'd like to hear now comments from the Portland Association of Teachers, President Teal. So the agreement between PAT and Portland Public Schools allows for the association to be provided time on the agenda of a regular board meeting for a brief comment, but it doesn't need to be brief. You don't, you don't have a, you can go as long as you want. Tonight, we have, um, Pat President Elizabeth Teal here to provide, um, brief comments.
Thank you, Director DePass, and, um, thank you, Board Directors and Superintendent Guerrero, for all of the conversation tonight and, and all of the, the updates. I appreciate the thoughtful discussion and the questions. There's so much going on. I'm here today to report to you the results of two ratification votes, um, that took place in PAT this week. Our substitute educators collective bargaining agreement and the COVID safety letter of agreement. So first, I'm going to talk about the substitute educators. I am pleased to report that our substitute educator members voted overwhelmingly to ratify this agreement. Substitute educators are critical to the functioning of our schools. This year, we know we need them more than ever. You can see that in our staffing shortages. Subbing in our schools is challenging work, and our PAT guest teachers are certified educators who know our schools and know our students. Many of them are our most experienced educators who have retired from full-time work and continue to support our students as substitutes. Many are newer educators who are building their experience and finding their best fit. And some are all-in substitute educators. That's what they want to do, and they're in it for the long haul to be our substitutes. And we need them all. We need them all, and we need lots more of them. We need them to be supported, respected, and fairly compensated. And this agreement makes important movements, um, towards those goals. Some highlights, um, last year was a really tough year to be, uh, employed as a substitute educator. In CDL, there were very few days available for people to work. And I am so pleased that this agreement creates a pathway for, for our folks to keep their health insurance, because health insurance this year is based on days worked last year. And so we were able to come to an agreement that keeps, um, our, our subs here employed with us and, and, um, cared for. Um, it also includes solutions for filling jobs at our priority schools, for ensuring that substitute educators get necessary materials like keys to the classrooms where they're supposed to work, and paper lists so that they don't have to send a kid down to the office with. office with the only list they had of who was in the classroom. And it gives our subs a fair wage increase. So I urge you to please vote yes on this fantastic agreement that I think says a lot of, about our, our value of our substitute educators. And I also want to talk to you now about our COVID safety letter of agreement. We all know that along with the joy and relief of being together in person, this has been an exceedingly challenging beginning of the school year. I mean, you've heard lots about that today, I know, from educators and family members and from the staff who are working so hard to figure out and solve problems that we have never had to solve before as a district. Well, we'd hoped that the worst of COVID would be behind us this fall. The Delta variant has assured that it is not. Our understanding of the virus and the guidance from health authorities and the ODE continues to shift. I learned that today, there's new guidance from ODE that we haven't even talked about yet because it just came out today. The anxiety and fear that stems from this uncertainty is real and it's justified. And furthermore, there's a gulf between the conditions that the CDC and the ODE recommend for our schools to operate safely and the resources that we have to put those recommendations into practice. The lack of screening testing is one example of that that I just heard tonight. I didn't, the six week, this is something that ODE promised in July would be available to schools. And to hear that it is not ready yet is a blow because that's one of the things that we counted on. The decades of disinvestment in our schools have never felt so raw. The most obvious solution to keep our students safe right now are the same solutions we've been fighting for, for years. Smaller class sizes and safe, clean, modern school buildings. These will continue to be the solutions we need in this current pandemic, in the next phase of this pandemic, and it will continue to be what we need to give our students the education they deserve. Given the realities of this pandemic and the conditions we're facing, this letter of agreement does not answer every question or solve every problem around safety, but it does give us a solid foundation of what we will do to create the safest and most stable learning experience that we can do, offer our students this year. It keeps in place strong safety mitigations that we worked for last spring, including reducing viral spread with HEPA filters in every space where educators meet with students, maintaining COVID safety committees at every school, prioritizing remote assignments for educators who are unable to get vaccinated because of medical reasons, and committing to transparency by notifying professional educators and the wider community of any COVID infection in the building within 24 hours. And I'm glad to see that the updated website may be a vehicle to be able to do that better. In addition, this agreement adds crucial new elements to keep our students safe as we open our schools at full capacity, which we did not do in the spring. That was with half, half capacity in most cases. But this agreement gives, gives families who needed a remote option by reopening registration for OLA just before their school year started. I see there are still many families on the waiting list and those families are in flux, not knowing what their option is for their kids. I hope that gets rectified really quickly. It supports students in quarantine by creating new remote positions to assist students. We know there are already students in quarantine and they already need that assistance of an, of an educator who can reach out to them and make sure that they're accessing content. It's in our agreement to implement the OHA COVID asymptomatic screening testing program. I know that we are in agreement that that's important and it is so frustrating that that's not there for us, but it is crucial that we are ready for it or find our own way to, to provide this for our students. And reducing the chance of breakthrough infections by making KN, KN95 masks available to educators. Physical distancing was one of our final sticking points. It was tough to accept that three feet whenever possible means that students in some classrooms will not have three feet of physical distancing, even though that is what's recommended. So what we were able to agree on is that when we can't give students that minimum of three feet, we will have full transparency and clear mitigation measures to increase the ventilation and air purification in those spaces. I'm here to report that in a vote that closed this afternoon, PAT members voted overwhelmingly to ratify this agreement and I urge you to do the same. This is an important step we can take together to do our part to keep our students, educators, and community safe. And now our challenge will be to hold ourselves to these agreements and carry them out, including upholding that transparency about positive cases in our school and transparency around the, the physical space that we have. We know that we're facing unprecedented challenges and our schools are crucial to the well-being of our students. Although magical thinking is tempting, it will not keep our students safe. We must look at the real data, listen to our frontline educators, and as Michelle has said many times, be as agile as the virus in adapting to the reality that we're facing. So much appreciation to you all for your partnership in prioritizing the safety of our students and community and transparency for the sake of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good news. So the agreement between Portland Association of Teachers and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yes, thank you Chair. I too, very pleased that we're able to bring before the board for their consideration this letter of agreement with Portland Association of Teachers. I want to thank the PAT team as well as our district team, who, who really had a lot of thoughtful conversations about this, of which Genevieve Rowe played a starring role as our Director of Employee and Labor Relations. But we have our Chief HRO here as well to talk about some of the highlights. You heard some of them from President Teal, but here to answer your questions as well.
Thank you Superintendent Directors. Before you this evening is our tentative, well, and we'll, you, you have the PAT subcontract. We'll address that in a moment. But beginning with the tentative letter of agreement with PAT on health and safety, really.
And excuse me, I don't know if your microphone is on.
I'm so sorry. Maybe it just needs to be closer. Okay. Talking through the mask. Okay. So before you is our tentative letter of agreement on health and safety related to working and teaching conditions in COVID. And I said that the sub-agreement that President Teal just walked through as well will be next on the agenda, so we'll speak to that in a moment. As you know, the district has gone to extraordinary efforts in extraordinary times to create the safest conditions that we can, following the latest guidance and advised by an independent panel of health experts. At no point during the pandemic have we rested on current state or it's good enough. We have poked, prodded, studied, queried, consulted, and gone through continuous review and improvement to create our layers of safety and we continue to do so. The LOA represents an affirmation of those efforts and that continuous improvement in partnership with our teachers' union. President Teal just walked through highlights of the agreement, so I'm not going to repeat those. But I can add that the only constant about this pandemic is that conditions and guidance will change. This was expressly discussed between the district and PAT when we were agreeing to the letter of agreement. And both parties acknowledge that we want to be guidance, guided by the science and not by politics or personal beliefs. I want to thank Elizabeth Teal and the PAT leaders for their work on this agreement and for the PAT membership for ratifying it and voting for it overwhelmingly. And we are here to answer your questions.
Do, Board, do we have any questions?
Do we want to get the motion on the table?
We can get the motion on the table. Do we have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 6369, Agreement Between the Portland Association of Teachers and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon?
So moved.
Second.
Director Brum Edwards moves. Director Scott seconds. The adoption of Resolution 6369. Is there any board discussion?
I have a comment and also then a, just a topic to explore. First of all, I want to thank both the district, the district team and also the PAT team that prioritized and made possible what we all had an opportunity to see the other day, which is our students returning to the schools. And it was done because of an extraordinary partnership and it was done in the spirit of keeping our students and our staff safe. So I want to start with that. There's been a, a whole host of emails and communications around masks, which to me is, it's just part of the keeping everybody safe. But can, can you, not but, and can you share what, because it, what's been said is we're never going to get rid of masks. And I guess if that's what we need to do to keep students safe and staff safe, I'm assuming we keep masks. But speak a little bit to that because that has been probably a topic that we've all heard about a lot the last several, the last several weeks.
Yes. And masks are an important layer in our safety measures, right? So currently, there's a mask mandate from the CDC, from our state and county guidance and in the Ready School Save Learners Resiliency Framework. And our LOA specifically ties that mask mandate to that guidance and to the RSSL guidelines. And I, I want to be really cautious about opining on hypotheticals in the midst of a pandemic about a key safety provision when we don't yet have vaccines available for roughly half of our students, right? I, I want to be really cautious about what we say in those conditions. I can, I can say that the letter of agreement doesn't talk about the expiration of mandates. There's a hard stop at the end of the year, but it doesn't address the conditions on which any of the specific health and safety protocols would expire. So we're going to, we are going to hold the course until we get, get different guidance. And that guide, because that guidance is coming from the CDC, from the state, from the county, and from ODE, we can imagine that as that guidance changes, we are going to update our safety protocols.
Can I have, ask a follow-on question there? So can you just point to where in the agreement it is explicit that our protocols would change when the guidance changes? And, and speak to how it relates to the beginning statement that this is in effect for a year and then how it relates to the standalone clause toward it. I think it's number 11 or, excuse me, number 15, that staff are required to wear face coverings unless they have a documented exception to the rule.
Yeah. So I want to, I want to make sure I'm clear about this. The letter of agreement doesn't expressly say when these conditions happen in the 128 different protocols with RSSL, that the, the safety mandates will be removed.
So are people, so would you then say that, I mean, is the assumption that a lot of people have made that in the absence of that explicit statement, that, that the guide, that the articles in this will not flex with changing guidance?
No, I would say that if our public health authorities and the Department of Education were to reduce or remove a mask mandate and our health advisory panel were to endorse that and we were confident that masks were no longer required to keep students and staff safe, then of course we would move forward accordingly based on that changed guidance, not based on June 30th of 2022, right? And we would remove any unnecessary layer that doesn't add any safety in our, in our mitigation effort. I want to point out though, that any of our unions, PAT or any of our unions could come to a different conclusion and they could issue a demand to bargain over changed conditions. That is, that is always the case. In the LOA, if I'm understanding your question correctly, paragraph three talks about PPS shall comply with the Multnomah County mask mandate, right? And in paragraph 11J, it talks about all students will be required to wear masks except for students who are allowed not to wear masks under early learning division or RSSL guidelines. So we continue to come back to what is the public health authority guidance in RSSL? What does that require us to do? And affirming that we are following those guidelines.
Yeah, I really appreciate that because I, I think sometimes we forget like, hey, I've been vaccinated, I don't need to wear a mask. Or when students get vaccinated, I don't need to wear a mask. But it really is a two-way protection and it's, I mean, the data's there. So I, I hope we continue to stick with the health and safety requirements that are driven by the science and health professionals who are advising us.
Yes, and we continue to engage with our labor partners about what those working conditions and safety concerns are to continuously improve them.
Thank you. And I, I don't think anybody loves wearing a mask. So it's, thank you. Do you have additional discussion?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Reese especially because I asked via email like a whole ton of questions and I just appreciated your thoughtful response and clarity to help me get everything I needed for this. So thank you for taking the time to, to answer my questions and to help me fully understand.
It's our pleasure.
Director Scott?
Thank you. Just a really quick, again, thanks, thanks to both, thanks to PAT and thanks to our, our team in terms of this negotiation. I, I think it is a good, it is a good safety agreement. I appreciate the fact that it ties it to overall public health guidelines. I think that's, that's really important as we move forward. All these layers of mitigation are really important right now. They may be really important for the entire year. It is also possible we'll find ourselves in a few months in a different situation. And if we do, it's good to know that this agreement allows us to, to change that as we go through. I think the language is actually very clear. I will tell you, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there on social media, but I appreciate your clarification, sharing about that point. It's one of the reasons why I'm willing to support this moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just note, that was the first time I didn't look at you and I kind of read your body language from a distance. So we're, we're gelling as a team here. That's a really good thing. Ms. Ratcha, is there any public comment?
Yes. But I closed my list, so just a second. Thank you. Shelley Reetz.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Reetz. Last name is R-E-E-T-Z. I'm a PPS parent. Some of the points that I was going to make tonight were just discussed in the last couple of minutes, so they might be a little bit redundant, but I'm going to go through it anyway. With how dynamic and ever-changing the COVID-19 situation is in our community, it's irrational and unwise to make an agreement for how we'll respond for the entire school year when we don't even know how things are going to be looking next month. The proposed agreement for the duration of the school year makes no opportunity for amendment once conditions change. It makes no mention of how things will look drastically different once all schoolchildren will have the opportunity to be vaccinated, particularly since all school staff or nearly all school staff will also be vaccinated. While I agree that the measures that we're currently taking to protect our students and staff, such as masking and distancing, are appropriate in the current climate, once conditions change and cases decline, particularly once the vaccine is available to all school-aged kids in the next few months, they may no longer be appropriate or necessary. Paragraph three of the proposed statement does state that PPS shall comply with the statewide and Multnomah County mask mandate. However, paragraphs 11J and 15 both flat-out state that all students and staff will be required to wear masks unless they have a documented exception. And they don't mention that the district will continue to follow the state and county requirements for masking if and when those change. So please make sure that any agreement clearly states that PPS will follow our state and local public health official guidance with masking and will not make a blanket statement that masking will be required for the remainder of the school year. We need to trust the public health experts when it comes to making these decisions and we really need a clearly defined off-ramp for mandating masks in our schools. Another problematic clause in the proposed statement is in paragraph 11G, which states, "Any symptomatic student who is tested, even if they test negative, must remain in the symptom space until they leave school immediately and not return until allowed by RSSL guidance." This is problematic as it seems to exclude any student with any symptoms, even if they test negative for COVID-19. I do not believe it is appropriate to exclude every child just because he or she has a runny nose. The clause needs additional details about what symptoms will exclude a child from school if they test negative for COVID-19. Lastly, paragraph eight states that no educator shall be required to provide both distance learning and in-person instruction simultaneously. Although I agree that this should not be the norm for our in-person students and teachers, I do believe that in the current climate where it's inevitable that some students will be quarantined from their classes for a period, it is imperative that these students receive instruction while they're out. In these instances, teachers should make use of the simulcast technology to allow all of their students to have access to learning. This is especially important given the opportunity gap and the learning loss that our children have already experienced since last March. Overall, please make sure. Overall, please make sure that any agreement does not lock us in to rules for the remainder of the school year and allow us for amendments to be made as the COVID-19 situation continues to change. And please make sure that all decisions related to health and safety are following the guidance from our local public health, health officials.
Thank you, Ms. Reetz.
Thank you.
The board will now vote on resolution 6369, Agreement Between the Portland Association of Teachers and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6369 is passed by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting.
Yes.
Director DePass, I did have a brief comment that I wanted to make before we went to public testimony, which is, I, I want to say that I do appreciate the, the feedback that we've gotten from many members of the public about some inconsistencies in the language of this document. I think there are some problematic contradictions in here. However, I'm going to hang my hat on the statement that gives us the ability to flex with the RSSL guidelines. Really, that's all I care about, that our decisions are being guided by the public health guidance. And, you know, I want to state, not to be backward-looking, but we, we got burned before because we were locked into agreement that did not allow us to flex with changing public health guidance. And it had, was to the terrible detriment of our older students. Our middle and high school students received half as much in-person instruction because we were locked into an outdated agreement. So I feel reasonably confident that that is not the case here and that, you know, we're taking all the necessary precautions and that we're all together with, with our labor partners. We're going to be able to adapt as the guidance adapts. But I did want to acknowledge that, that it's not entirely clear here, but it's clear enough for me to have given a yes vote.
Thank you for your comments. We're going to move on now between, the agreement between Portland Association of Teachers, Substitute Teachers, and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, well, as you heard, we also have for your consideration agreement with our substitutes. We want to make sure everybody gets a turn, so we also have Stacy Jung here, Senior Director from HR, and our contracted legal counsel, Chris Duckworth. Thank you for being here.
Good evening again, directors. I'm pleased that this final CBA, this is the, the one bargaining unit for whom we don't have a finalized collective bargaining agreement in place. And so I'm pleased to have this in front of you. This means upon ratification of this CBA, we will have completed bargaining on successor CBAs with each of our units. Here to-
Can we just give a round of applause to that achievement, to your team?
Here, here.
It has been quite a road. So here to my left is Chris Duckworth. He is our Bargaining Chair and a lawyer at CDR Labor Law. Chris has been an invaluable advisor for the district. He demonstrates that particular quality and critical blend of bargaining expertise with a nuanced understanding that what we need to build at and outside of the bargaining table are strong relationships with our labor partners. So his guidance and expertise is particularly welcome and appreciated. And further to my left, on the other side of Mr. Duckworth, is Stacy Jung. Stacy is our Senior Doctor of HR Operations. She has several decades of experience, beline her youthful appearance at the district in IT and HR and as a school staffer, both as a member of one of our unions, PFSP, and as a member of management. Among the many HR operations team, teams under Stacy's purview is our Substitute Educator Office, and she was also a member of the bargaining team. So I'm going to turn it to Mr. Duckworth and Ms. Jung to describe what we have in front of us.
Thank you, good evening, Board of Directors. I want to start by echoing what President Teal said earlier about our substitutes. Our subs are one of the biggest caring, biggest hardest groups that we've got. And they, many of them are returning after retirement to provide stability and make a positive impact on our students across PPS. They are flexible and help our schools run smoothly, covering every type of classroom in our schools and programs. Our subs are our most, one of our most important employee groups, and we cannot operate without them. We, we want our students to see consistent and reliable educators all the time. We are excited to share a few of the goals and highlights from this round of contract negotiations and remain encouraged that these positive changes will support recruitment and retention of our substitute educators as well as improve our fill rates at our historically underserved schools.
Thanks, Sharon, good evening. So the district entered this round of negotiations with three primary goals in mind. The first was to make changes to the contract language to reduce unfilled teacher jobs, especially at underserved schools. This first goal was the most critical to the district entering these negotiations as it is an equity, equity and inclusion issue. The lowest teacher job fill rates occur at underserved schools where students need the most support. The second goal was to continue to provide competitive compensation and competitive benefits to our substitute educators. And the third goal was to update the CBA language as it had been some time since this contract was fully renegotiated. And there were numerous administrative process and legal changes that had occurred since the last time it had a full review. So we're, we're glad to report that, in our view, this agreement advances each of those three goals. We'd like to credit the thoughtful and the diligent work of the PPS bargaining team and the collegial and professional engagement of the PTA partners in reaching this agreement. This was a truly cooperative endeavor and it was a pleasure to serve as lead negotiator for the PPS team and, and to work with the PAT team on this agreement. So with that in mind, we'd like to highlight a few additional accomplishments. It's always nice to say that Ms. Teal did a great job of summarizing some of the highlights, and I don't want to belabor those or repeat them, but I think that there are a few others that we'd like to highlight for you tonight. So on goal number one of increasing those fill rates at the historically underserved schools, the teams primarily took an incentive-based approach to this. We increased incentive pay at district-designated schools. We increased the flexibility to designate the schools that the district identifies for these various incentives that we're going to discuss. We implemented an incentive bonus for educators who teach a large number of days at a certain, at certain underserved schools. They will be entitled to a year in stipend and bonus. We added paid professional development, again, for educators who teach a certain number of days at these underserved schools. And for those, as, as described earlier, some of these substitute educators are newer to our system, we added a guaranteed job interview for any of them that teach a certain number of days at a school. So aside from incentives, we also took some other steps in the contract language to help improve the fill rates. We reduced lead times, which are sort of the, the percent visibility that different substitute groups have to the jobs. We reduced those so that it's compressed, so that the last group in line has a broader and longer chance to see the job, to get it filled. We reduced, we agreed to language to reduce last-minute job cancellations, which was a problem that we had identified. And finally, the parties agreed to continue the discussion outside of the formal bargaining process. There were some great ideas that were exchanged across the table, but we just needed to reach an agreement to move forward, particularly on the health insurance issue. So the parties agreed to sit back down and to explore some of the ideas that they'd advanced, to think through ways to particularly target the fill rate issue, whether through specialized cohorts or through bringing in different licensed teachers. But those discussions will take place in the coming future. So on goal number two, on compensation and benefits, we'll, we'll echo as Ms. Teal's description of the health insurance issue. We think that that was a success and very important to the district to continue to support substitute educators during, through health insurance during a global pandemic. On compensation, I just wanted to note that substitute educators' compensation is directly based on regular unit educators' compensation. And so with the increase that the regular unit educators saw as a result of the recent limited re-opener bargaining, the substitutes also will see that increase, which is, which is significant. And finally, on updating contract language, we were able to reach some good accomplishments there as well. We removed gender-specific pronouns throughout the agreement. We removed other antiquated language that were just vestiges of, you know, prior, prior times. And we made numerous other changes just for administrative efficiency and just to reflect legal updates. So with that, we wholeheartedly recommend ratification of this agreement, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions coming from the board?
I have a question, and this is just from a historical perspective that I know just being in schools that some schools have, end up with permanent sub. Well, first of all, I'm going to start by saying I think the substitute teaching job is probably the hardest, one of the hardest jobs there ever is. And I say that as not a very good student when I was younger. And so I start with that right off that. And I know that historically we've had in some schools permanence, like permanent subs or much higher uses of subs or not being able to get subs and you're visiting the school and you've got an administrator who's filling a classroom. And you referenced that there's going to be future conversations about it. I would be interested in just getting historical data and where we are as we head back to in-person learning, what that is, because I think, I do think that that has real impact on student achievement. And I'd be interested in sort of what the nature of that conversation is and how we use data to inform it.
Absolutely.
The, the kind of permanent subs that you're referencing, I think, are ours, site support instructors, which are actually part of the regular PAT bargaining unit. And there's so many per year that we can employ. And we delegate those out to schools based on the unfilled rates each year. And we look at them and we, we change that every single year. The historical data, we can certainly work on, on pulling. The, the unfilled rates over the last year and a half have obviously shifted a bit with CBA and all the things. But, so we're, but, but they have been historically tough to fill at our underserved schools. So we're looking at every incentive that we can to think about that. So some of the things that we're, we're talking about going forward are some other options for sub, kind of sub-cohorts. And can they, can we assign some subs to a full cluster? And they work just at those schools to get to know the staff and the students a little bit better, talking about a restricted license program and how we support that for substitutes and part of kind of the Grow Your Own program and recruitment efforts. And those were things that just took a lot longer to, to, to discuss. And we wanted to make sure we, our subs had their benefits for the year. So with some timelines for open enrollment. So those are some of the agreements to continue talking through.
Just to add on to that, I, the restricted license program was a, a district-driven idea that I think we shared with you at an earlier meeting. PAT was very receptive to it and they're very open to the discussion. The idea of this, this substitute educator cohort that the district could assign out to particular schools with needs, that was a PAT concept that the district was very interested in pursuing. So yeah, there's, there's strong interest in these committee discussions to come.
I'm sorry, so when is the timing of the, the follow-up discussions on that?
I think November, I think we have to get, I think we have to start by November.
Okay, and then one last thing, I was trying to look through here to see if the language is still here, but it used to be, there was language in the substitute contract that substitutes were allowed to, like, decline to work at some schools? Is that still, the language still in the contract?
I don't know that more specifically.
Yeah, I think you might be limited, you might be referencing, there's a general substitute list and then there's a restricted list. And the way that it's written in the contract is yes, certain subs, if they qualify for this particular classification, they can limit both the location and the times that they would like to work. And so that, that's folks who, I'm sorry, I have all the criteria in front of me, but it's, I know it involves retired PPS regular educators and other folks who have sort of been vested in.
I appreciate that line of inquiry because now it's making me wonder which schools are getting the subs and, and which ones are. It makes, it makes me question where we're sending people, what the test scores are in those schools, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd be really interested in, once we start up, in, in exploring what's happening with that or, or being updated on, on those discussions.
I think it's huge progress that we have been able to add incentives for our highest need schools and that in combination with the site support instructors, which Dr. Bird, you might remember off the top of your head, but it's a significant number that's in, in our budget for regular staffing, like 20 or so.
I think it's 15.
Something like that.
15.
15, yeah, so it's been growing over the years. And that's just hugely important because those, that person is there for whomever calls in that day and you don't have to do the substitute scramble. But I will be really interested to see if any of these incentives and other sort of progressive elements of this new contract help us increase our sub pool.
I have a question. What does underserved schools mean?
It's the historically underserved schools based on the Title I. And I'm going to stumble on this for a second, the Title I and free and reduced lunch and that information, and most of it is our CSI and TSI schools.
Which would be comprehensive, the CSI comprehensive, and the TSI's targeted supports.
So, so I'm going to just assume, I'm going to just assume these are some of our, like, when you talk about free and reduced lunch, so economical disadvantaged schools, is there any indication as far as academic levels of these schools as well?
Yeah, I believe that's incorporated in the CSI, TSI ratings by ODE.
So just make sure I understand, so we're paying people more to go to those schools because they need more help, but they won't go to them if they're not getting paid more? So-
Yeah, they have usually higher kids of color.
Okay, so, just on my understanding, so we're, we're paying them more to go to these schools by us paying them more, are they, are their academic achievement increasing?
So for our substitute educators, our primary goal is to fill the vacancies, right? As our regular educators-
So just have a body in the classroom?
I'm sorry, say again?
So just to have a body in the classroom?
Uh, just to have a licensed and approved and body and a teacher in the classroom, yes.
So it has no, so we're, okay, well, again, we're still paying them more money to, to do a job that they're doing, but we have no indication if our kids are learning anymore?
Well, I think the point is they're not doing it now, like, they're refusing those jobs.
Well, why, I'm just, why are they refusing those?
Yeah, the nature of our sub workforce, it's a temporary, they can take assignments at their, you know, at their will, right? They're not assigned to permanent positions. So our intention is to create more rewards for the most difficult assignments. So yes, the end result is that there is a financial incentive to take on the schools which have the lowest sub-fill rate.
Oops, sorry, we're also investing in professional development for our subs, which hasn't always been the case. So that's hopefully having an impact on the quality of instruction that they're able to provide when they do show up.
And I think the even more important part, as far as what you're getting to about academic increasing, is these teachers that are assigned to be in the building, to develop relationships with the kids, to be there, to then be subs in that building whenever they're needed. So they're full-time teachers, there's what, 15, is that what you just said? That are assigned to some of our CSI and TSI schools as like an extra teacher that can take those sub-things. Because I think when you said that it's the most difficult to fill, that, that people would rather go to a school where they think it's an easier day, like a, you know, they don't have to maybe do as much. But when you're having to do interventions with kids, at some of our schools, our subs are less likely to take those jobs. And so that's a, that's a bigger cultural injustice issue that I- And so that's a, that's a bigger cultural injustice issue that I think we need to think about. And right now, we are also trying to make sure that our schools that have been historically underserved are well-served by our licensed teachers.
Okay, so I guess maybe just me. So we're incentivizing subs to go into schools that we haven't done the job in before, but we're gonna incentivize them to go in there just because they don't want to go in those schools that the kids are not up to par anyway. So isn't that some kind of, I mean, I guess for me, wouldn't that be a flaw in our system overall? So we're, we have to pay people to go into schools where our kids already wasn't doing good already?
Absolutely, and I think this is a Band-Aid. Hopefully, in five years, we won't have to do this because the strategies we're implementing will have closed the opportunity gaps in those schools. But it is, it's, it's indicative of the, the problems that we are trying to address. And I think it's a great question and a good calling out of one of the underlying flaws of what's been happening in PPS.
I think another thing that we're not talking about here is looking at the rate of absenteeism and how it varies across our schools. Because we tend to have more need-for subs in our highest need schools. We're trying to backfill that with our site support instructors who are invaluable because they know the school community and they know the kids. And they're, you know, getting the professional development. But I, you know, this is something that I've wanted to look at for a really long time, look at the trends in our absenteeism and what can we do to make an impact on that? Because kids really need their regular teachers to be there all the time.
Yeah, and I would just be concerned if we're just having a warm body in a room, particularly in a school that needed more assistance than less, and they weren't charged or tasked with teaching kids how to read. They're just making sure they're keeping them safe, I guess. So that, that would concern me also.
I guess for me, it's just, it's, I guess it's just really hard to continue a cycle that historically has been going where people benefit off of our most vulnerable, and now we're doing it at our schools. So just like, that's what we're teaching our kids as well?
So I think I would, I, I think I would offer a different framing.
I'm sure.
Within, within the sub collective bargaining agreement, looking at the levers we can pull for this bargaining unit and this workforce, right? The, we have to identify incentives. And so we're differentiating compensation based on differentiated need. The compensation doesn't come without requirements to it. There's professional development that is required to be eligible for the additional incentive, as well as a service requirement in, in our highest needs. So I, I would frame it as differentiated incentivized incentive tied to differentiated need.
And do we pay for the professional development as well?
Yes, we do.
So not only are they getting paid more, we're paying for the training for them to get paid more.
We think that that's an important, investment in professional development is a key to our workforce, especially our educators.
Cause I think we're, the question Michelle had about just a warm body in the room, we want someone who's highly trained and who can teach reading, to be the person that's there. What, I mean, our teachers get sick, they have, they need a break, they have weddings, they have, you know, funerals. So they need to be able to take time off, so we want those people to be highly trained. So it's this, we need to train them and pay for the training. And yet we also need to make sure that our, our regular teachers are having the support they need so that they're, they're able to be there as much as possible.
I think it's important to acknowledge in this context, there are substitute educators are a highly valued portion of our workforce. We don't consider them just warm bodies. We do have licensing requirements for them, we have training requirements for them, and we value their service tremendously. And we don't pick every warm body that comes up off the street. They go through a rigorous review through multiple administrator interviews, et cetera. So it is not, it, it, I just want to make sure that the value and the professionalism of this workforce is identified.
Yeah, and I, and I'm, I'm sure they're more qual, they're very qualified, they're educated, I'm not trying to take that away from them. I just don't see why we, and I'm gonna say it again, why we are having people benefit more on our most vulnerable population that has historically been the case for America. So I just don't see, I just don't know what justification can continue to be made. I know we can, we can dress it up, we can make it PC, we can, we can do all that. But when it comes down to the core is we're still incentivizing someone off the backs of our most vulnerable.
I, I, I want to just appreciate all of the perspectives in the room. They're all important and they're right. And I ruined my reputation for being on time tonight and would like to move our conversation ahead. But I think this is very, very important. And I think, you know, what we're seeing is where the system, you're starting to see system, system inequities and how they appear and, and also the challenges of just solving for this. So I, I just wanna, I want to commend you for your work in, in getting us here tonight. And I really appreciate the perspectives of my colleagues. We don't all have to agree, and I, and I hope we don't because it's, it doesn't help anybody. I want to ask if we have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 6370, the agreement between Portland Association of Teachers Substitute Teachers and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon.
So moved.
Second.
Director Combs-Damm moves and Director Brim Edwards seconds the adoption of Resolution 6370. We've, we've had board discussion, is there additional discussion? Or is there any public comment?
I just want to say I really appreciate Director Hollins's perspective. And I think he's tapping into the deeper equity work and anti-racist work that this board is interested in doing. And I think it's always this tension between solving the current problem and solving the deeper problem. And I think you're really talking about that deeper problem we have. And so I appreciate that we're gonna continue to have those conversations as we, we adjust and change our system.
I appreciate you too.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
So the board will now vote on Resolution 6370, agreement between the Portland Association of Teachers Substitute Teachers and School District Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Not really.
Two noes. So are there any abstentions? Okay, Resolution 6370 is approved by a vote of five to two with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting.
I'm abstaining as well.
Abstain.
Just abstaining.
Okay, thank you for that. We're gonna move on to, and thank you, staff, reflections on the first day of school. It's hard to believe that school was almost, it opened about two weeks ago. Like the rest of my board colleagues, I enjoyed visiting sites. I actually learned from my colleague Director Brim Edwards that you can actually be in eight places at once. I don't know how you did it. But anyway, I saw, I saw people around and tweeting and it was really wonderful. I enjoyed visiting some of the schools and seeing students and families showing up a little nervous in first day of school, just like every other year. But the first day of school this year for in-person learning and, and kids getting to meet their teachers and classmates for the first, for the first time. It brought back memories of me starting school as a four-year-old in, in, in South America and it didn't speak the language. And I was in the first grade, scared to death.
Welcome, first day, we're excited, freshmen, everyone's ready, freshmen?
We're incredibly excited to welcome back nearly 50,000 students to the more than 81 campuses of the Portland Public Schools.
Good morning, everybody, good morning.
Um, today's the first day of school in the grand opening for Kellogg.
I'm, I'm feeling joyful, excited, a little nervous. It's probably the exact range of emotion I had going into school for the first time as a five-year-old.
All this lovely energy, it's nice to have students back, it's been too long.
We, I want them to know this, the adults in the system have considered and planned for the safest re-entry.
So you can put anywhere you like, here are things under the chair.
Yeah, it's really important, it's been over 500 days since we've had regular, everyday in-person schooling. And we need to welcome our students back and share our excitement that they're back in our buildings.
I just hope his first year goes good, I hope his whole school year goes good.
So I think that short video captures the mood and the excitement of the first day and those little glimpses. I'd like to invite, I know we're running late, but I'd like to invite each board member who would like to, to take a minute or two to share your reflection on the first day of school, if you need to. But I'd be interested in hearing any thoughts you might have now that we're back to school. And I would also like to ask our superintendent to share his reflections as well. So do we want to, Director Green, did you want to share a few?
I would love to.
Observations?
I, I'd love to, not a problem at all, not a problem at all.
You heard me say brief now.
I, I know, and I, I saw, I also saw that you put me first and so that I could, you know, okay.
I did that on purpose.
I figured that.
It's intentional.
So I went to Chavez, I went to George, and then I also went to Roosevelt. It was my intention to only go for like maybe an, an hour or so. Margaret was with me, we, we had a wonderful time. And it was great to see the, the kids in school, it was great to see their, their excitement about wanting to be there. With the teachers, you could see, you could see both excitement, frustration, and fear. I, yeah, I just always, but you saw all that at the same time. It's like they were happy to be there, meeting, seeing some of their kids. They were concerned about what the heck is happening because it's like, it's so much all at once. And then there's the, you could see and vividly hear the fear, and some of them actually said it. I don't want to take COVID home, you know, pretty much, you know, I, I don't want, but it was, it was a, it was a good time. And I left the schools after going to all of them. Each school, I left hopeful, I left very hopeful for the idea that we're, that we're trying to build this on, which is that we want to see our kids healthy all the way around. And we do understand that for a lot of them, that means getting them back in the classrooms. And then that for some of them, that means creating another way for them to learn so that they can come back to school when they feel comfortable to do so. And I, so I left each school feeling very, very hopeful, but also with some marching orders of, you know, this is what I need you to work on. Because every school was very clear to let me know, uh, don't think that this pretty facade that we're showing you right now is gonna be the end. You got some work to do, buddy, so I was excited.
That's great, that shows a level of trust and hope on their part too. You know, you're new and they got you while you're new and excited, yeah, thank you.
I went to Creston and to Cleveland and then also hung out with a lot of Selwood and Llewellyn parents at, at my local coffee shop that day. And what I heard universally from parents was that they're really excited their kids are back at school. And so many of them said, you know, my kid struggled. There was one family at Creston, the third grader made her parents hug her like three blocks away because she didn't want to like have mom and dad hug her at the front steps. And then there was another family there who had a student that is in special ed. And the mom was just saying, I'm so grateful that he can be back in the classroom and, and be with his peers and get the attention he needs. And, and she said, and so I can have a break as well, just because she's done so much this year. But that, that's what I heard, I, one of the Selwood parents said, it's a little bit like you're on a plane and you're skydiving and your kid is jumping out of the plane and then you're gonna jump out of the plane too. And you trust that that parachute is packed correctly and you trust that your kid's gonna pull it at the right time, but it's still a little scary. And I thought that was a really great way to sum up the, both the trust and the hope and some of that fear. And it was lovely. And then I got to embarrass my daughter at Cleveland when she came to school. So that's always, you know, is, is, as much as I can be annoying to the 16-year-old, that is my life goal, so.
The pinnacle of excitement.
Well, I'll be quick because I'll just echo most of what Ailey said. I, you know, I went to Maplewood and Ida B. Wells, and it was great to watch the joy, the joy of the, of the grade school kids as they came. And, and, you know, and they were all extremely well-behaved with their COVID protocols and their spacing and their masking. And just, but you could just see that excitement for kids who hadn't been in school or at least not been very much. And then the same thing up at the high school, right? It was a different, different, different environment, but those kids, I mean, I'm not sure there's ever been a, you know, a high schoolers that that excited to sort of, to sort of come to school on the first day. I did not get to welcome my own son to Ida B. Wells because he didn't have to start till 10:30. So I offered him a ride at 8:15 when I showed up, but he turned me down, so.
Was he still in bed?
Yeah, I know. Right, yeah, it was a pretty obvious answer, but it was a great first day, I was excited to be part of it.
Thank you. I guess we're just going down the line.
Okay. So I, I didn't go eight places, but almost. I started my day at Pioneer, then went to Kellogg, Marysville, McDaniels, Irvington, Lincoln. And then I stretched into day two with Alliance at Meek and Alliance at Benson, the Reconnection Academy. And then I stopped by the Cairo Celebration. So, um, I, you know, what everybody else already said about the mixture of emotions, I guess I want to just highlight a couple of things, just starting the day at Pioneer. Just the care and thoughtfulness that all the staff exhibited and demonstrated as they welcomed students back. And, you know, it was just very touching to see that first day at school at Pioneer. Kellogg and McDaniels, the excitement of a brand-new building and what that means and like how cool it is that they get to start there. Marysville, I had to wear their shirt because I think it's, just embodies like together we can do hard things. And I thought that was a great, just way for them to, to start the school year. They're starting with, as a K-5, no longer a K-8. So new beginnings from them. For Cairo's, just everybody on the board knows, we had a big thank you from the Cairo's community for the partnership that we had approved earlier in the summer. And then I want to just briefly mention my time at Alliance, at Meek and Alliance at Benson, which is now Alliance at Kenton, is, when I was at Alliance at Meek, there was a shooting a block away. This is about one o'clock in the afternoon. And I just want to call out just the professionalism and again, the care that the staff exhibited toward their students and the trauma that an event like that has on a school community when it happened so close. And I really hope that we take up Director Green's charge to us that we need to be part of that conversation about reducing gun violence in our community. And then at Alliance at Kenton, I also want to just express to the staff and the rest of the board that the students and staff were so appreciative that they had a building to go to that was supporting of their needs. And that it was a real space, not shoved into a corner at another comprehensive high school. And really looking forward to their new home eventually at the multiple pathways for graduation building. But thanks to the staff who made that, made that happen and looking forward to when we have that groundbreaking. They, the groundbreaking for the multiple pathways to graduation. So it was a great start to the school year and just joy and excitement all around and apprehension because of the environment we're, that we're in.
Thank you.
I went to Markham, Odyssey, Regular, and the next day I ended up going to Benson. Markham was awesome, just seeing those elementary kids going to the class. Just their excitement of being with, you know, their classmates. I seen some real innovative things there as far as, you know, trying to keep them social distancing. They was utilizing outdoor classroom settings. They, they had this popsicle thing where you can tell how many people's in the bathroom with popsicle sticks. It was just, it was awesome. So that, that was encouraging. Odyssey was another great school. Rigler, they had a thing where everybody was outside, they had these tables to where everybody got to sit at the same table. They got to be at the same table, but they can pick wherever they want to sit. It was just awesome. So, I was really impressed with what we had done. Of course, there always could be some improvements, but overall, I think it was great. Dr. O took me around everywhere, and she was just an awesome hostess, so it was awesome.
Now, we all want to go on a tour with Dr. O. I'm sure her calendar's up to date.
I guess I would just add that, for me, it was just very emotional, and it was so, the emotion was right at the surface for our students and our teachers and our principals. Principals who were greeting students that they've only seen on Zoom. And just the nervousness, but the excitement. It really felt like the first day of school times 100. And that was really, really nice. And then just the other thing is, what an incredible experience it is to see kids coming into a brand-new building. Whether it's the newest iteration of where they'd been before, if they're seniors at McDaniel, or whether they were just setting foot in there. I mean, McDaniel has 300 more students than were forecast, and that's not a coincidence, you know? That's partly because they saw that taking shape on 82nd Avenue and said, "I want to be a part of that." So that's just really cool. And then the converse at Lincoln is like just making it work, you know? There's, there's, it's a construction zone. And it already is a postage stamp in downtown Portland to begin with, but it's a construction zone. But the kids are gazing out upon what that new school is going to be. So, it's just a lot of really positive signs of investment and change. And then, to your point about Dr. O, like just being with Dr. Byrd and seeing the rapport that you have with our building leaders at several different schools, and also the true solicitation of like, "what are your needs, what are your issues, what are your problems, how do we solve them?" I mean, it's really great to see all of that in action, because I think that the connection between our buildings and our central office, and the perception that the central office exists in service to our schools is so much stronger than it used to be. So, just thank you to everybody, and it was just a really joyful day.
Student Representative Weinberg, did you want to have any, any thoughts?
I'll be really quick.
Sure, thoughts?
I probably went to one school.
Yes, I only, I only went to one school. It was Cleveland High School. Yeah, very exciting, I got that 10:30 start, so that was, that was nice. Yeah, I was definitely still asleep at 8:30, so. Yeah, but it was great to, you know, have a slow start, get breakfast with friends, and then all come in together. Yeah, the first day was exciting, a little scary too, because of course Cleveland added to their enrollment as well, so seeing how those numbers played out in the hallways was, was a concern going in. And then just, as the two weeks have gone by, it's just, the amount of time spent in school is just, like I forgot how much time I'm spending in school. Six and a half hours a day, five days a week, plus homework is, it's a lot.
Thank you.
Oh my gosh, I have to just tell this story. When I went to Pioneer, the first kid I met said, "I'm going to be here for six hours." He was like really impressed that like, how long he was going to be there, it was very cute.
I appreciate everybody's really focusing on the positive. Could we do better in some areas, probably? Is that just like real life, yes? So thank you for sharing your thoughts. We have two final orders of business. I'm so sorry, Superintendent?
It's okay, Chair. I, thank you, first of all, to, I'm going to focus on appreciations, but I want to, I want to thank directors for getting out there, whether it was the first day or since then. It was also a first day for our kindergartners on a different date. And, so I've been on the circuit, and first day of school always starts at sunrise with the media. There was a lot of attention, because we were the first large district to open classes in person, full-time. And so there was a lot of interest in seeing how that went. And all reports were that it went very positively and very smoothly. There was that range of emotions, but it's my fifth first day of school here at PPS, and in many ways, you know, went, went, I won't say the easiest, but I think there was so much preparation that went into it. So my appreciation really is, you heard Principal Smith and Principal Skiles and all of our school leaders out there, educators and support staff, who really pulled out all the stops. And I think heard the theme of our institute this summer and our messaging around, "we know we're in tough circumstances, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and yet, let's do everything we can to take care of our students, to be safe." And we notice every day areas where we can continue to fine-tune, and we're doing that, and we appreciate the observations, and we see them. But I think overwhelmingly, our teachers and our school leaders have really done everything possible to assure our families and our students that we've missed you, and, and we want to get to the business of teaching and learning, because there is a lot of unfinished learning that we need to tackle. And then, I really have to appreciate the central office leadership team, especially our cabinet members, because we've been at this for 18 months, and we really haven't had a pause to get to the first day of school. And so to see the day go as well as it did, just my hats off to, you see many of them here in the audience, for their tireless work to get us to this point. So, I think we've, we've done everything possible to be at this point. And we have a few other bold ideas up our sleeves that you'll hear from soon to try to get at some of these other areas, that we want to try to, try to put in some additional improvements. But I just want to thank the broader community out there for entrusting us that we could serve their children and keep them as safe as we can. And we need everybody's cooperation in doing that, because to the earlier conversation, our schools are just hubs of the community, so this only works if everybody's doing their part all the time. So, thank you directors for getting out there, and thank you out there to all the talented educators of the school district.
Thank you so much for that, and thank you also for sharing, you shared something briefly at the end of that day. It was late, and you said, "we had this incident command center that was staffed up, ready for like major disasters, and it was very quiet." And I, I just, I was, you know, it's better to over-prepare, I suppose, but it was really, really comforting to hear that at the end of a very long day. I'm going to make a suggestion, we have two things left on our, on our agenda. We have a board presentation on Summer Acceleration Academy, and I'm wondering if anybody would be terribly upset if we skipped over that, in favor of, we have something on the consent agenda, I know you're disappointed.
Well, I think our staff has been sitting here waiting, and they've taken a night away from their families to be here. And so I would hate to have to have them come and sit at another night, is that accurate?
I'm just throwing it out there for discussion.
Yeah, I would encourage us to do it, just because I don't want to have our staff have to be away from their families another night when they've been sitting here for three hours waiting to give this presentation.
I hear that point, and I, and I feel very badly about staff. I guess I just do want to point out, we are, we are an hour and 15 minutes over. We have policy rescissions to do, and we have a contract that we pulled. And, and I know that the, and I, and I know the issue, I mean, this is, this is a presentation of information, and it's very good. I went through the slide deck beforehand. So, yeah, I mean, I, I certainly, if the, if the board, you know, wants to move forward with that, that, that's great.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Can, the thing I pulled off of the consent agenda, can we put that on for next week? That way we can get to...
Yeah, it depends on the timing of the contract, I don't know if there's urgency. We'd have to ask staff, Superintendent, if there's urgency around that particular contract.
Coming, Stan, is that time-sensitive? Could, could we, so we have three things to discuss, and I'm suggesting we discuss two. Is it possible to move the update on the Summer Academy to a time certain? For instance, starting the first thing at the next meeting?
I think we can pull the policy rescissions, none of them are urgent, right?
I would agree with that. It'll take two, it'll take two minutes, frankly, I mean.
Okay, so I was just going to say, Andrew and I have agreed pretty much to be respectful of everyone's time by, by not going on and on and on and on, because we know that it takes a toll on family life. So I'm torn here. If we've got two minutes of this discussion, and I don't know how long the presentation is, it didn't take me that long to get through the slides either.
I'd like to hear the summer learning stuff.
Let's go ahead with it then, and just know that we're, know that we're late, know that we're running late. Okay. Superintendent, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yeah, I'll queue it up quickly, we'll be efficient. But it is important information, and of course, we're here at the board's prerogative. We all understand the importance of making sure that this past summer, we offered a comprehensive catalog of programming. We wanted to make sure our students had options to a variety of programs. Most of these were implemented oftentimes in partnership with community providers and partners. We wanted to make sure students, particularly if you recall, they had some time in school in the spring, but we know that a lot of our students needed extended learning opportunity, arts education, other enrichments. We wanted them to be engaged, so I think what you're going to hear from the team is a quick summary of the programming that was offered to our students, the participation levels. And so we have Senior Director College and Career Readiness, Aurora Hemo, and our Director of Learning Acceleration, Dana Nuremberg, who will walk you through quickly those slides.
Great, and we'll go, we'll go efficiently. So, thanks for having us here tonight, it's nice to see all of you. And I appreciate your stamina and all that you do to support our schools. So we can actually kind of go to the next slide. So this summer, we had a big-picture theme of create, play, learn. We had a lot of resources that came into our, to our hands at a very late moment, and we were able to offer a wide range of programs, including some that are existing programs, some that we expanded, and some that were brand-new. So here's a listing of all the different programs we offered this summer. And the next slides quantify them, and I can talk a little bit about each program. So if we could go to the next slide. So the first is EKT, which is our Early Kindergarten Transition Program, which is a marvelous program to welcome our, our kindergarten students into the building before school for school readiness, and a really robust parent engagement component. We expanded this year to include first graders, knowing that many of our first graders had not been in a building before. So hopefully next year, we'll go back to just focusing on kindergarten. But that was a really exciting program at 16 sites. We had Summer Acceleration Academy, serving second through eighth graders, brand-new, from-scratch program that we started planning in April. And we were able to serve 2,400 students at 18 hub sites. And with this hub model, we were able to serve students from every school. So we were able to prioritize students at the schools that may have had students who had more need. Local school teams made the recommendations, and we partnered with families to arrange transportation and all the other pieces, as well as a really strong partnership with SUN for afternoon programming at all of those sites. We hosted credit completion camp at our high schools, and this was a really terrific model where our high school students who had some unfinished work to do from the spring were able to work with their own teachers at their schools to get that work done. And the research shows that the closer our students are to completing that credit, the more likely they are to complete the credit. And so that was a really successful opportunity. We also expanded our summer scholars from one site to five sites plus online. So there's a lot of expansion this summer, and that provided a lot of opportunity. There wasn't as much enrollment as we had hoped for, and I think there's an opportunity to investigate why. You know, our students are tired, there's, there's lots of things to think about. We had a really strong Indian Education Program, which was also a big expansion. It was over, they did three two-week sessions focusing on different ages of children across the program. Previously, they focused mostly on middle grades, but this year they expanded in both directions, serving more of our elementary students, as well as our high school students, through literacy and a lot of culturally-specific programming to support their cultural and identity and development. We had letters tutoring, which was a really powerful opportunity where our educators who are engaging in letters training around the science of reading were able to tutor some of our students who most need additional support in foundational literacy skills. And we focused at our upper elementary students and some of our middle school students who most need supports in reading. And that's actually, some of that's going to continue into the, this month. If we could go to the next slide, please. We continued our amazing PIL trajectory math program, which is a continued successful model that Marshall Haskins and Diallo Lewis run with a really talented team of educators. It's around, for our middle school students, focusing on math and also sports and sportsmanship. Our migrant education program was online this summer, and they also offered one-to-one tutoring, so providing additional support for some of the unfinished learning for those students. Our amazing summer arts academy continued this summer at Tubman, and they had a fantastic time, and were able to overcome the obstacles of providing performing arts opportunities with not so much opportunity for audience. And the team really worked to provide great opportunities for students. Another new project this summer was the RFP Partners. So we had a huge racial equity and social justice request for proposal that the team worked on, and Dani and her team led, up to the very last minute, you know, because just the complexities of the funding and the complexities of the process. We were all able to offer a huge catalog of opportunities for students at campuses across the system. We had our terrific leap into ninth-grade program, helping our ninth graders transition into school. Continued ESY for our students who received those services through their IEPs. And then of course, our SUN partnership at 24 sites. So complementing the Summer Acceleration Academy, and then also additional sites had SUN programming as well. So you see in the numbers, and I did the math, because when you mentioned math, I was like, "okay, they want numbers in math." So, some of the students are the same, and I don't have an easy way to distill that, but we served more than 9,000 kids this summer. So that's a quick summary, there's some photos that are just a few of the highlights. You know, picking just a few was really tricky, but from Boise Elliott, kids were engaging in arts activities as part of SUN. Some of our students enjoyed Oregon Ballet Theater at Da Vinci. The ninth graders really building connection as they transitioned into Grant. And the next one's EKT family meeting, it's a really essential ingredient to the Early Kindergarten Transition Program. So families got to meet Principal Silvas at Rigler. Got to see, this is one of my former students at Sitten, who was a fifth grader, using our ready math curriculum. So that was one of the ways that we provided support for unfinished learning. These students and teachers got a preview of our new math adoption, which was a pretty exciting opportunity. The Indian Education Program, the students got to go on a berry-picking field trip and then make some freezer jam. And then Tinker Camp is one of our RESJ partners, where kids were engaged in hands-on STEAM. So that's just a small snapshot. We had hoped to have some of our RESJ partners here tonight to share their reflections, and we weren't able to have them with us. But, one really successful example is the SAM Lab at Lane Middle School. So at the last moment, we had to shift our programming there, it was a hands-on STEAM program. And Fred Locke, who's one of our retired principals, led the site, and they had so much fun. And they went from really simplistic cars at the beginning of the program, to by the end of the program, the students presented their learning and their work around creating solutions for the homeless in Portland. And they created a strategy and presented it to their peers. So really, applying their critical thinking, teamwork, and creativity and presentation skills. So I think that's all we have, I just, there are some next steps. And so we're analyzing lots of sources of data, right? So we don't necessarily have hard academic data from many of our programs, but we have attendance data, and thinking about the credits completed, work samples from our students. We did instructional rounds at two of our sites, empathy interviews with families to hear their voice and perspective, parent surveys, focus groups with our employees, and staff surveys, and student feedback. And so we're also having a facilitation meeting by our Systems Planning and Performance Team. We're facilitating a session, a focus group if you will, with all the different leaders of the summer programs to think of how we can capitalize on our collective work this summer and do better for next year. And I'm working on a more detailed and thorough summary report, both for the system and of course for ODE. And then, we're starting our planning in December. And I've already been recruiting for our steering committee, and I already have some educators who worked with us this summer, and others who I'm recruiting as we think about our planning for next year.
That is fantastic. I, I'm really happy to see that you're, that you're collecting all these sources of data and doing a lessons learned kind of, yeah, that's fantastic, really great to hear about this. I know, as a kid that grew up not far from Tubman, that at least spent the summers there with my grandparents, that it was really, that building was used to do activities during the summer, and really, really great. I would love if you would offer to come back, maybe earlier in the evening, down the line, once you've gotten that data, and share out the results. Director Constam?
Thank you. So I'm really interested, when you meet with Systems Performance, to see whether or not we can disaggregate these cohorts of students that participated in some of the more academic programs, and then track it with their achievement through the year, so that we can see what, if we can draw correlations from those intensive efforts, because that's going to be an important data point for us as we look at, not just next summer, when we know we have SRF funds again, but we hope that this will be evidence that will compel us to continue a lot of this programming, us to continue a lot of this programming, even, even when those federal funds disappear, that it becomes part of our core programming, because we know some of these are just essential, and we've had this incredible opportunity to be innovative over a pretty broad scale. So, I will really be looking for that when we see that data. And some of these are just so creative, like the PIL math trajectory, I had an opportunity to see that, and just watching action as they were like doing fractions and measuring things for the first time, and building these tiny houses, and just the vibe and the creativity and the just enthusiasm about being in a program like that in summer was, was amazing. So, that does a lot of good things all at one time. So, thank you, thank you. This was a major push, I know.
Thank you, and thanks for visiting at Boise Elliott.
I appreciate the wonderings. Director Constam's asking, I think, the right questions, and we'll have some, some information and data, obviously, as we get underway this year, and we implement our full assessment calendar, we'll be able to really draw back and disaggregate, you know, the value we believe that a lot of these activities are. So, and I just want to know, not only what did, were we prepared to open school, but we had the largest, most comprehensive summer programming, I think, in the history of the district. So, 9,000 students had an opportunity, academic, enrichment, arts, you name it, you, you saw it, and you'll hear a little bit more about it. So, I just want to commend the team, everybody that was involved on all the summer strands, while a whole lot of us were also focused on opening the school at the same time.
That's fabulous. It sounds like approximately 20% of PPS kids got to take advantage of this programming. Thank you.
And good job telling us all of that in 10 minutes.
And yes, thank you for talking fast.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We're going to now have a first reading of policy rescissions, rescissions, and this is work that came out of the Policy Committee. Director Brum Edwards, would you like to introduce this next item?
Thank you, Chair DePass. So, these are what I would consider housekeeping. So, we have four policies, one related to the Health and Welfare Trust that just says, "See provisions in the professional agreement." We have one, it's called Administrator Consultations. It was adopted in 1971 to comply with the statute that was repealed in 1973. We have a compensation statute that we have a recommendation for staff to rescind, and then one related to personnel files that says, "See provisions in professional agreements." So, tonight, this isn't a final vote on rescinding, this is just a vote to have a first reading. In three weeks, these will come back to the board for final rescissions. And for those new to the board, the reason why we're rescinding some policies is if you have a policy manual, or policies that are cluttered with ones that are either duplicative, out of date, or don't actually have any content in them, it really sort of devalues the rest of them. So, this will be just a routine thing that we do throughout the year in the Policy Committee, make recommendations of things to rescind, so that we can elevate the policies that are really important, that reflect our values, not ones that are outdated from 50 years ago that haven't been rescinded. So, I, these came out of the committee with a recommendation for the board to have a first reading. So, Madam Chair, I would ask that they be officially, you don't have to vote, it's just a, their first, first read into the record.
Thank you, and you've shared with people where they can comment on...
I didn't get the script, but if you could...
Let's see.
So, these are all posted on the district website. If anybody in the public would like to comment on any of these rescissions, you go to pps.net, you go to the Policy section, and our draft, the policies will be listed. And for any board member or any community members that has any question, feel free to contact me if you have questions about these particular first readings.
Yes, and some of them are, some of these policies are older than some of the people on our board.
Yep.
So, it's time to revisit those. Thank you for that brief presentation. And the final thing we have to do, and I'll leave it to, is we removed a contract from the consent agenda early this evening. You've said that it would be okay if we put this on our...
It's not time-sensitive.
It's not time-sensitive.
It's a, it's an open contract. It's a flexible services contract.
Okay, it's a flexible services contract. We'll promise to put that at the top, we'll, we'll provide opportunity to discuss. And I believe with that...
Director Holland, if you could just share your questions of staff with the board and the responses that you get in the meantime, that would be helpful.
Yes, if you can do that in between. Our next meeting will be scheduled for September 28th, and I think with that, we're adjourned.